Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If you can quietly take your seats, I'd appreciate it a great deal. Good evening. My name is Mark DeSalvo. At 6:30, I serve as elected town moderator. Welcome to the annual town meeting of the town of North Andover, first established in 1646. I call to order the 2025 session of annual town meeting. Our current exercise of local participatory democracy, we maintain, maintain, and renew a tradition of self-governance practiced in this town for 379 years. By gathering together today, we honor, embrace, and embrace the meetings of 250 years ago. They were the local democracies that by their nature taught Americans the virtues and responsibilities of self-government. It was through the conduct of town meetings that the colonial American public embraced the inalienable right of self-determination, independent of the British Empire's control, which in turn sparked a revolt and fueled a revolution. The voices then raised, actions taken, financial support committed, and lives and liberties pledged at many town meetings in the Commonwealth at that time remain our current worthy heritage. On April 19th, 1775, the alarm was sounded by church bells, drums, rifle fire signaling a crisis that was at hand, and messengers sent town to village and farmhouse to homestead. The British were marching towards Lexington and Concord. Local militia from our town gathered at the North Parish Meeting House and prepared to go to battle against the world's most vaunted army and its king, for many, their king, to whom they had sworn and pledged allegiance. Four companies from nearby this very place with a total of 329 minute men, armed and funded by prior town meetings in our community. They had little in the way of training and supplies. They didn't even have a country to back them up, and they most certainly believed that they had no real chance at victory. Our forebears from this tiny town joined the pursuit of the retreating British regulars to Arlington and Boston that very momentous day. They believed in America and the principles of our democracy before the very concept of our nation even existed. It is our obligation to keep that promise that they impossibly envisioned. Two months later, on June 17th, five sons of our community were killed at the Battle of Bunker Hill. They included two black men, one recently emancipated, and another still enslaved. Let us honor the heroism of Samuel Bailey, William Haggott, Joseph Chandler, Philip Abbott, and Salem Poor with a moment of silence and reflection about the import of what they did and its connection to this day. Much as with the militia members who marched to battle 250 years ago this month, those attendees at town meeting also put their lives, their fortunes, chose the sacralization of honor, and put that on the line. For more than a century before the revolution and the 250 years since, our citizens and town meeting members have maintained and strengthened town meeting. Tonight, you occupy those seats, those same positions, as we carry on this highly valued form of self-governance. To commemorate this heritage, please welcome North Andover resident and historical reenactor, Bob Elegrato, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. He is attired and armed as those brave men who marched 250 years ago to create the democracy we enjoy and have challenged to maintain. For those of you willing and able, I invite you to please stand. And I invite this good man just introduced to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and I ask that we pay particular attention to the last six words, "with justice and liberty for all." Sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bob. By show of your voting cards, how many people have been to town meeting in the past? Oh, that's excellent. In the interest of brevity, then, I'll dispense with most of my introductions, review of rules and conduct, and will bring them up only as necessary, noting that they have been previously published. And they are the same general rules we have consented to conduct and enjoy the town meeting for many years, beginning on page five of the warrant book and displayed on the screen. I am grateful to the citizen advocate, Brian Hanson, who is available to assist citizens with town meeting problems and act as deputy moderator should that be necessary. If you need assistance, just call out from the microphone or seek out any of the tellers or go to our remote question table at the front of the room to my left. The citizen advocates helping us with monitoring compliance of our remote questions initiative, our longtime volunteer Heather McNeil, and our youngest volunteer today, high school student Aiden Espolada. Thank you both. They also act in the most important role of Lost and Found and Problem Resolution Center. I have sworn an affidavit that I have no conflict on the matters before us this evening, have not advocated a public position on any of the articles, and I will perform my duties as moderator fairly and impartially. I will continue my practice to vote to make or break a tie, and only under those two circumstances. Let's hope that neither of those are necessary. We come together tonight in good faith to make judgments for our entire community. Sitting here, you have been transformed from citizen to legislators. We leave cynicism and bad faith behind us, knowing the magnitude of our collective efforts this evening. Thank you in advance for choosing to respectfully participate in local democracy. One other advisory, one does not have to be an expert to discuss items on our agenda. The numeraphobic are welcome to participate, as one does not have to be fully knowledgeable about budgets or finances to offer an opinion. Rather, is the consideration of the consequences of the judgments faced tonight on all our neighbors that takes precedence. At town meeting, we address matters of public policy, programs, and projects, not people. Caring for each other and acting respectfully is of far greater importance than any differences that we may have in the moment. I now recognize the chair of the select board, Brian Roach.
Mr. Moderator, Brian Roach, 200 Cochrane's Lane, North Andover, Chair of the Select Board. I move this meeting to dispense with the reading of the warrant and with the reading of the constable's return of service of that warrant. I further move that the moderator not be required to read articles of the warrant verbatim, but be allowed to refer to articles by number and by subject matter, and further that any motion or amendments need not be read but are to be voted upon as shown, published or otherwise provided, in print or on the screen to the voters in attendance.
All those in favor of the motion, please raise your voting card. Thank you, you can put it down. All those opposed, it's an unanimous vote. Good way to start. Excuse me a moment. We will deal with articles one, two, three, and four by consent. These are merely housekeeping articles, as we have done commonly for some years now. Is there objection? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move to adopt articles one, two, three, and four as printed in the warrant and displayed on the screen.
The motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
The motion is made and seconded. Please raise your voting card with your banded hand. Thank you, if we can put it down. All those opposed? I declare it a unanimous vote. We have several other similar consent items, which we've grouped by categories, Article six, 10, 12, and 13. Is there objection? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I move to adopt Articles 6, 10, 12, and 13 as printed in the warrant and displayed on the screen.
The motion is made and seconded.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your card. Thank you, we have good observation. All those opposed, raise your card. I declare it a unanimous vote. We have a third group of similar consent items that we've collected by category, Articles 18, 20, and 21. Is there objection? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move to adopt Articles 18, 20, 21 as printed in the warrant and displayed on the screen.
Second.
And a second, thank you very much. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your card. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your card. I declare it another unanimous vote. I'm further advised that Article 5 has been withdrawn. Is there objection? I hear no objection. Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen, we've just dispensed with over 40% of our articles tonight. We are now at the principal business of the night, the town budget and other financial articles. I've committed for some weeks now to the public and principals that we will commence discussion of the town budget by 7:00 PM and aim to keep that promise, and hereby exercise the privilege as moderator to move consideration of this article. Upon conclusion, we will revert to the articles in generally regular order, although I will reorder those that are interdependent on each other or made necessary by prior actions of this meeting. Now on to Article 11. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I would move to raise the appropriate transfer from, I'm sorry, move to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or otherwise provide the sum of $135,325,653 for the purpose of funding the general fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026, as it appears in the warrant book and on the screen in front of us.
The motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Now, let me share how we're going to address this article, as it's the principal item of interest this evening. Similar to the protocols that we have used in the past, we will hear a situational analysis by the chair of the finance of the Finance Committee. It is a group of skilled volunteer citizens who dedicate a significant amount of time and professional expertise to fulfill their sole task to advise this meeting as to its recommendations that they believe are best for the community at large. Its chair will present, and upon conclusion, the town manager and superintendent of schools will provide their insights as to the proposed town budget. The chairs of the select board and the school committee will briefly provide follow-up remarks. I will then ask the official recommendation of the three primary boards. When done, we'll have a period of 20 to 30 minutes of just questions on what's been presented to more properly inform the community. Statements and opinion thinly disguised as questions are not allowed during this reserved question period. Upon conclusion, we will commence the regular manner of discussion, including consideration of amendments, should there be any. I am aware of the possibility of two parties that wish to do so, and I will recognize them to make an amendment if they then so choose, in the order they provided me amendments, as they are required to do so in writing and have done. After up to a total of about an hour of discussion on these amendments and the main motion, we will progress to a primary vote unless there is a motion, a proper motion, to close debate and move the question as necessary to be heard. I recognize now a presentation for up to five minutes by the chair of the Finance Committee, Donovan O'Connell. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everybody, my fellow residents, members of town meeting.
Excuse me a moment. Can I ask that you please put five minutes on the clock? Thank you.
Can we do four? No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
We'll test you now.
All right, that's fair. My name is Donovan O'Connell, and I proudly serve as the chair of the North Andover Finance Committee. As Mr. Moderator alluded to, we are a volunteer board made up of residents appointed to advise this meeting on matters of financial policy and budgeting. Our responsibility is to thoroughly review the town's operating and capital budgets, assess revenue expenditure forecasts, and ensure that any recommendations we bring forward support the town's long-term financial health while meeting the immediate needs of our community. I'm here tonight to speak to you about the fiscal year 2026 budget, a topic that is both complex and critical. Finance Committee has worked closely with the school committee and the select board over the past several months to recommend a budget that is fiscally responsible while still supporting the core mission of our schools, in particular, educating and caring for the children of North Andover. I'm going to focus my time on addressing the school portion of the budget, as the Finance Committee believes that this is probably of most interest to everyone at tonight's meeting. It is not, oh, there we go, now I've moved too far forward, maybe not. All right. So to start, I think it's important to understand of the challenge that we're addressing. Over the last two years, the North Andover Public Schools have faced recurring budget deficits. These shortfalls have forced the use of emergency funds to cover unanticipated expenses such as increased special education costs, substitute staffing, building maintenance, and even issues like rodent problems. In developing the fiscal year 26 budget, school leadership conducted a line-by-line analysis of every expenditure. This included built-in cost escalations such as contracts, utilities, programming, and state-mandated services. The result? Well, a level services budget, that is, one that maintains the current level of programming and staffing, would require $71.8 million, or a 17% increase over last year's school budget. While such an increase would allow the schools to maintain all current programs, that level of funding would only be possible through major cuts elsewhere in town or by asking voters to approve a tax override, something that the Finance Committee believes shouldn't be pursued without more time and more public engagement. Oh, wrong way, there we go. So it's also important to understand the broader context. Several decisions made in recent years have contributed to the current situation. So between 2021 and 2025, the school district used 4.9 million in federal ESER funds, which is pandemic relief funding, to hire about 30 additional needed staff members. While this helped meet post-pandemic needs, it created ongoing obligations that those one-time funds could not sustain. At the same time, student enrollment declined by 5%, meaning the district was supporting more staff for fewer students. A teacher's contract negotiated in 2023 included wage increases that were understood to become a little bit of a challenge for this fiscal year 26 without new revenue. Perhaps most significantly, a financial review initiated by our school committee, after uncovering unallocated invoices, revealed that those unallocated invoices had doubled the projected fiscal year 25 school deficit from 3 to 6 million. So this confluence of factors places significant burden on the fiscal year 26 budgeting process, not just for the schools, but as a result for the whole town. So faced with difficult trade-offs, the school committee, the select board, and the Finance Committee have jointly come together to recommend a school budget of 68.2 million, which is a 10.4% increase over fiscal year 25. This represents one of the largest school budget increases in North Andover's recent history, and this figure was not chosen lightly. It allows the district to maintain most essential services while avoiding the far more significant financial strain that a level services budget or a rushed override would impose. To fund this budget, the town will use almost all of its excess levy capacity, the room we have under Proposition 2.5 to raise taxes without an override, that's what we're talking about when we talk about levy capacity. So this will result in a 6.1% increase in taxes. For context, a fully funded level services budget would have pushed the average tax bill of a single-family home to over $10,000, which is a 9.73% increase. So by approving this 68.2 million dollar budget, we are making a meaningful investment in our schools while preserving some of the capacity in the tax levy to respond to future wage increases already built into the teacher contracts for fiscal year 27, as well as some room for unforeseen economic changes that could come down the pike. We should also be clear, this budget was, still, will still require schools to make cuts. It's not a perfect solution. I need about 20 seconds.
Please.
It's not a perfect solution, but it's responsible one, it's a responsible one that protects core educational services while minimizing long-term risk to the schools, to the town's fiscal health. In closing, I want to emphasize that this budget represents months of collaboration, analysis, and very tough and frank conversations. The Finance Committee believes this budget strikes the right balance. It supports the needs of our students, avoids destabilizing cuts to other town departments, and keeps the town on solid financial footing moving forward. It reflects our shared values and a commitment to responsible stewardship. On behalf of the North Andover Finance Committee, I strongly urge you to support the fiscal year 26 budget of 68.2 million. Thank you for your time, thoughtful consideration, and your continued support for our town and for our schools. So I guess I couldn't do it in four.
You're forgiven, it's quite all right.
Thank you.
We have a presentation now by the town manager, Melissa Rodriguez, and superintendent of schools, Pamela Lathrop. And when they commence, please put 10 minutes on the clock.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Melissa Rodriguez, town manager. Okay, I'm here today to tell you a little bit about the budget as a whole and the town budget, and we're going to start by talking about the fiscal year 26 revenues. So the revenues for the fiscal year 26 budget total $136 million, a 6.74% increase from fiscal year 25, and an $8.6 million increase from last year. The town's budget is made from four revenue sources: property taxes, local receipts, which is things like building permits and excise tax, intergovernmental aid, which is our state aid, and our transfers from other departments, which come from our enterprise funds. This shows you how much is actually made up from our tax levy, which is the purple, and of that, about 84% is actually on the residential tax base. This chart shows what you see in your budget book, which is our expenditures for fiscal year 26. As you can see, education is slated to go up 10.4% when you look at both North Andover Public Schools and our vocational schools. Total town departments are increasing by .83, and our insurances, like employee benefits for health insurance and our liability insurances, are increasing by 9 and 8%. This chart shows the budgets by department. You'll see that the public schools make up about 51% of the budget in this chart, but in reality, when you take benefits, liability insurance, and our shared services, it ends up being closer to 64%. This sheet shows you what the impact to your budget, your tax bill at home would be. If we pass the budget as proposed tonight with the 68.2 million dollar number, everyone's tax bill, if you go home and take a look at it, you can use a 6.1% is the assumption. So you can see that our average property here in North Andover is currently valued at $825,000, and that bill would be $9,861. Every million dollars added to the budget is approximately $100 for the average home. The guidance budget that was originally presented and is not before us tonight would have increased the tax bill by 2.5%. Adding an additional million would increase the tax bill by 7.11%, and a level service budget would be 9.73%. There really isn't a lot of highlights and changes on the town side of the budget. We have no staffing increases. For the fifth year in a row, we have funded the Finance Committee Reserve, which we use for emergencies, at $1.5 million. We have a salary reserve on the town side for our unsettled collective bargaining agreement, of which there is five. The cost of living increase for town employees is at 3%, and we continue to have $1 million in the budget for capital. The budget does contain many reductions, and unfortunately is a reduced service budget for the town side. The majority of those reductions are in training. Some of them are denials of requests, for instance, a denial for the bookmobile additional staffing, a denial for position upgrade in the assessor's office. It eliminated the captain positions at the fire department and reduced our overtime at the police department. And we also had to cut extra election workers, so from the town clerk's office.
Thank you, town manager and Mr. Moderator. Good evening, fellow residents. My name is Pam Lathrop, I'm the superintendent of schools. Thank you all for being here this evening to participate in important decisions about our town. I welcome this opportunity to talk to you about the fiscal year 26 school budget. The school committee and district leadership have worked closely to develop the FY26 budget. This has been a difficult process, one we have approached with care, transparency, and guided by a clear goal, to support student learning while addressing our financial realities. On February 25th, the school committee voted a recommended school budget of $68,200,000. This is a 9.9% increase from FY25 and an increase of $6,135,371. Don't take away time for me, I can't get it to move. When developing the FY26 budget, the North Andover Public School Leadership Team followed the budget directives set forth by the school committee. You can see the directives on the screen, a few I would like to highlight. One, create a budget operating within the allotted budget amount. Tonight, we'll present to you an operating budget of $68.2 million. Maintain class sizes between 18 and 27. Our projections for FY26 are in the elementary school, a range of 17 to 24, and the middle school, a range of 23 to 26, and at the high school, a range of 23 to 27. To reduce versus eliminate any programs and to maintain professional development opportunities for educators. There were also several budget drivers that had to be taken into consideration when preparing the FY26 budget: contracted services, supplies, and materials, personnel, involved in personnel or COLA, cost of living adjustment, and contractual obligations; transportation, which include general education, foster, unhomed or homeless, athletics and special education, and out-of-district tuition. This slide shows you the COLA, a cost of living adjustment, and the step increases that are factored into FY26 school budget. This year, our newly reconstructed central office finance team comprehensively analyzed all expenses, including salaries, curriculum, special education services, transportation, building maintenance, and more. This work gave us a clearer picture of what it truly costs to maintain the level of service we currently have in North Andover Public Schools. That analysis completed in January showed a level service budget that would cost $71.8 million, a 17% increase from our FY25 budget, and a $15.7 million, a 17% increase from our FY25 budget, and a 15.7% increase from the guidance we received. While the level service budget represents a significant increase, it was important for us to determine and present that number because it accurately reflects the cost, the true cost of operating North Andover Public Schools as it currently stands. This work followed the school committee's directive to create a budget document that correctly encapsulates the needs of North Andover Public Schools, especially after two years of a budget deficit. In response, and with the understanding of the town's financial constraints, the school committee adopted a 68.2 million budget for FY26. While this does not maintain level services, it aims to preserve our core learning priorities, those we believe that are most essential to student growth and success while staying within our available resources. This has required difficult decisions, and we recognize that the impact those choices have across our schools. But we are committed to moving forward with honesty and transparency and to working with the community to sustain the strongest possible educational experiences for our students. In the next few slides, I will share with you the staff reductions, the impacts, and the rationale for these reductions. I want to note that it's due to contractual seniority rules, the staff member impacted may not always be in the same role or school or the position being eliminated. I'll explain that a little bit more. In our elementary school, we have a reduction of eight general education teachers, a music teacher, a library, an art, a PE, and one and a half reading specialists. This is due largely to the fact that we're moving from five elementary schools to four elementary schools. In our middle school, we're reducing four general education teachers, three world language teachers, one art teacher, and two instructional coaches. One coach will be moving back into a traditional teaching position, and one coaching position was eliminated to bring back an additional language teacher. Originally, we had proposed four language teacher cuts and no direct language instruction at the middle school. However, we have reconsidered that based largely on our community feedback. At the high school, one teacher from each of the departments in world language, science, history, and English were reduced. There was one teacher in each of those departments. This is where it may be confusing. You may have heard several teachers or most of the world language department have lost their position. This is where seniority takes effect, so the middle school teachers who lost their position bumped into the high school. We only have cut one world language teacher from the high school. System-wide, we made a reduction to one nurse, two board-certified behavior analysts, one central office administrative assistant, and we have yet to determine if we need to reduce teaching assistants. The impacts are on this slide. In our elementary school, we're temporarily closing the Kittredge School, but you will see that we are still maintaining a class size of 17 to 24. At the middle school, Spanish will be offered in eighth grade. Students will have the opportunity to take Spanish two out of the three trimesters. We are looking at our schedule and restructuring our teams, but class sizes will remain between 23 and 26. At the high school, and specifically world language, all of our students who are currently in German may continue through grade 12. So that means students who are currently in ninth, 10th, and 11th grade will continue their German studies all the way through grade 12. Starting in the fall of '25, Spanish and French will be offered to incoming ninth graders. There are some reduction in our electives that are being offered, but again, our class size range for FY26 will be 23 to 27. So what's the rationale for some of these decisions? We looked at enrollment in this chart.
Excuse me, do we need another couple of minutes?
One, please.
Please.
Thank you. This chart shows the enrollment trends are going down, although we have maintained our staffing levels. This is largely one of the reasons that we were able to reconstruct, restructure our This chart shows you the COLAs and the steps for FY27. It's important to note that we took, take that into consideration when building FY26 so that we're prepared for FY27. These are the world language statistics at the high school. We currently have 613 students in Spanish, 46%, 176 students in French, 13%, and 58 students in German, 4%. Enrollment in both French and German has declined in recent years. While this trend does not diminish the value of these programs, it was a key consideration as we work to align program offerings with available resources. And this last slide talks about the Kittredge School. I think it's important to share here that the Kittredge School was built in 1949. While there's much love within that building, the building itself is not structurally appropriate for students of today. The existing building is not handicapped accessible, and it does not need current accessibility codes. In contrast, a new school will provide modern learning environments for students and staff to thrive. Classroom and learning spaces will have adequate square footage, and the design will be environmentally friendly and enhance energy savings. While these changes are difficult, they reflect a careful and thoughtful approach to closing the budget gap while keeping our core commitment to students' learning and well-being at the center. We are proud of the work our staff continues to do every day under challenging circumstances. Thank you for your continued support, patience, and partnerships as we navigate the next phase together. We remain committed to providing a high-quality education for our students in North Andover. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And remarks for up to four minutes by the select board chair, Brian Roach, and school
Good evening. Thank you for attending town meeting. The budget process is among the most consequential undertakings of both the select board and the school committee each year, and the road to the fiscal '26 budget was no exception. We recognize the trust the community has placed in us to do the work to present a budget that is fiscally responsible and meets the needs of our community. While the select board and school committee have independent roles and responsibilities, we have the shared goal of doing what's best for North Andover.
As a school committee, we are committed to advocating for the highest quality educational experience for our students while also thoughtfully balancing the financial constraints of our district. Setting our students up for long-term success requires careful planning. Planning requires data, and when the data changes, plans change. As a committee, we have worked alongside Superintendent Lethrup to dig deep and rebuild the budget from the ground up to ensure that we have a complete picture of the needs of our students and a plan we can execute for the near and long term. We understand this past year has been full of unexpected changes for our students, their families, and our school faculty and staff, and that the decisions we make are not just about numbers on paper, they impact lives. As a school committee, we value stability for our students, administration, faculty, and staff, and we feel this budget provides the foresight to ensure that long-term stability. Passing this budget as presented meets the needs of our students and goals for our district not only this year, but in the years to come. Anything less could drastically derail the progress of our school district. This budget will be a foundation for how we grow this district into what we all want it to be for the betterment of the education of all of North Andover students, and we ask it be passed.
The select board recognizes that maintaining a top-tier school district is among the most important obligations of our community. In fact, over the last five years, including this year's proposed budget, we've increased the school budget cumulative 28.7%, while enrollment has declined by more than 350 students. Additionally, we've allocated supplemental emergency funds to cover operational deficits and ensure the financial integrity of our town. However, we also know that our community has many needs that extend beyond those of the North Andover Public Schools. We've seen how failure to adhere to sound fiscal practices can derail years of careful planning, and the long-term needs of our roads, infrastructure, and public safety don't take a break just because the schools are facing budget challenges. The fiscal '26 budget and capital improvement plan represent a balancing act of these priorities and resets our roadmap for North Andover. There's been much talk about free cash and how we use it. The approach we've taken has allowed us to not only cover appropriation deficits but allocate much-needed capital funding: $300,000 for public safety, $300,000 for youth and elder services, $840,000 for roads and sidewalks, and yes, $1.25 million for school projects. As referenced earlier, plans change as facts change, and this budget allows us to address our ongoing operational costs, manage the impact of forecasted expense increases, and continuing the progress already made with facilities master plan two. We urge its passing so we can continue the work of moving North Andover forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I invite people who have questions only to come present themselves on either side of the room. Just line up to my left and right should you have questions only. As the, as people are gathering, I want to announce four or five things. Number one, no standing at the back of the room. Let's squeeze over. There are many seats available in section 13 and 14 just by observation, and some prize seats at the front of the room. You're welcome to come take those seats as well. I will ask you, please, to turn off your cell phones. The first cellphone that we hear gets to buy everybody in the room drinks at a lounge of my choosing at a later time. We will identify you, I promise you. And I note that exits are in all four corners of the room, and we thank our public safety officials, the North Andover Police Department, the North Andover Fire Department, and the EMTs who are on staff, who all wish to protect us and have done an outstanding job of that. Thank you very much, gentlemen and ladies. My last general announcement, again, if you have questions, come to the front of the room, is that a party with a lost license by the initials of LCC living on Old Farm Road, your license has been found, and it is available in the clerk's table in the lobby. So good news there. I'm not seeing any parties that wish to ask questions. Please come forward. Again, I will not accept statements that are thinly disguised as questions. The obligation is to inform our friends and neighbors, and genuine questions from registered voters take precedence. Please identify yourself by name and address before you speak. Excuse me a moment. And I'll ask you to be mindful of the obligation to note whether you or a family member has a personal financial interest in the outcome of this or any other article as defined in Rule 4 on page six of the printed warrant. You have two minutes.
My name is Alexis Lessinger. I live at 59 Phillips Court in North Andover.
Welcome.
I kind of have like a couple clarifications that lead into the question. Is that okay?
Please.
So you said that the average North Andover home costs roughly $825,000. Yes, is that true?
That was stated, yes.
Okay. And that they pay around $9,000 a year on that?
So was stated, yes.
Yes. And that each million dollars added to the budget adds $100 extra onto their payment.
That is correct. Right now, you're asking for clarifications.
Sorry.
Do you have a question?
I do have a question.
Thank you.
So if that divided, so if we added $3 million, then that would be $300 extra a year, and that would be $25 extra a month for people who have homes that are worth $825,000. Are we...
You are dangerously close to making a statement rather than asking a question.
I do, I do have a question.
You have one minute to ask a question.
I am wondering if there is concern about the ability to pay those taxes, and if so, why? Because it seems to come down to a smaller amount than I expected.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
If we can discern a question, I think the manager would like to comment.
So all I can say is, based on my experience here in North Andover, is that we have residents who, may surprise you, that do struggle with paying their taxes and do struggle with buying food. And we hear from those people annually, particularly seniors who are aging in place. And so when we create our budget, we do try to remember that, and remember that we do have many different socioeconomics here.
So we have a question at the floor.
Good evening. This is very strange.
Please get closer to the microphone.
Hello.
Hello.
This is strange to have you so close.
Please identify yourself and add...
Karen Klein from Cricket Lane. I just wondered, I remember years ago when we had to build schools and we had to get new teachers, pay for things. We had, we had people in the town say, "Have more bake sales. Do that to raise your money for the differences with the budget." I can't understand one thing. A few years ago, Amazon came to town, and I was thinking when they did that, it would seem maybe more money would be generated here, and I guess it's not true. Amazon is not increasing our funding.
So your question, please?
My question is, why not? What happened with Amazon?
Fair question.
I don't understand it.
Where demonstrations only add more heat to this building, so let's please keep it down. We have a specific query about the effects of Amazon on income and revenue to our community.
Sure.
We'll get that answer for you.
So I'm sure you remember a few years ago...
Right into the microphone.
If you remember, a few years ago, this town meeting voted to give Amazon a tax incentive financing agreement. That meant that they have relief on their real estate property taxes, but not their personal property taxes. We currently collect $5 million in tax, in personal property taxes from Amazon for the equipment that they have within their facility. When Amazon received its occupancy permits, the tax incentive plan went into place. It relieved 80% of Amazon's real property taxes on their building for two years, and 70% for two years, 60% for two years, and so on for 10 years until it all comes back into the tax rate. The levy capacity that we're talking about using tonight is the money that was brought in from the Amazon project.
So you're saying we still have eight...
Excuse me.
Or, excuse me.
Do you have a follow-up question? Ask it of me.
So this means that you, we still have seven years before we really experience any great benefit from having them here?
So we're already receiving $5 million. So $5 million is already on the books today. We already actually received all of the tax money we would be getting from Amazon because the town had allotted for a local option that allowed us to capture the construction funds. The levy capacity that we're talking about spending, that's the money that Amazon brought into the town. This town meeting voted to give Amazon a tax incentive agreement, which alleviated their need to pay a percentage of their taxes every year for 10 years. We are voting on whether or not to use that levy capacity that exists, which means that the town taxpayers would pay for that instead. So it's twofold. Yes, Amazon has come, and we have received $5 million already, but the other $5 million was meant to come on slowly over a 10-year period.
Do we know...
I'm sorry. Thank you very much for your question.
Just one quick thing. Do we know how much Mr. Bezos is getting from this?
Excuse me. You'll have a seat. The lady has a question, please.
Hi. My name's Anya Glasgow. I live on 725 Boxford Street. I was just curious, why don't you renovate Kittredge instead of building a new school?
Thank you for, thank you for your question. Somebody wish to answer that question in the back of the room here?
The Kittredge School Building Project has looked at renovating as well as making an addition and also moving forward with a new school building project. The committee is in the Mass School Building Authority program, and we will receive financial, we'll receive money back by being part of that program, and the committee has decided to move forward with a new building because of the benefits that we can receive for our students.
Thank you very much. We have a question to the left here.
My name is Jessica O'Donnell. I live at 480 Boxford Street.
Welcome.
I have some context to my question, but I'll try to keep it as brief as possible.
Very quickly.
We're facing devastating cuts with the proposed 68 million.
I'm sorry. Context is inappropriate.
Okay.
Ask a question.
My question is, given... My question is, given the fact that this budget will not allow our school district to meet the needs of 504 and IEP plans, how does the town plant, town leadership plan to budget the financial and legal liabilities that will arise when we are no longer meeting students' needs?
Thank you very much for the clarity of your question. Does anybody wish to answer that?
We believe that the sixty-eight point two million dollars will meet the needs of our students who are on 504s and IEPs.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. My name is Caroline Purperty Grossman. I live at two oh six Dale Street.
Welcome.
Thank you. My question is having to do with how the money is come up for, through levies. So recently, as many people in this room may be aware, the state passed the fair share amendment, which generated way more than projected. It looks like two point four six billion alone in 2023. So I'm asking, has any revenue from this, this new levy been used to fund the schools in North Andover? The money has been specifically earmarked for education. Thank you.
Thank you for a clear question. Town manager?
Sure. So if you think back to the slide I showed that showed our revenue, the, the local aid that I talked about is that Chapter Seventy, that state aid, that's where that comes in. What we do, and what most communities do, is they actually use the, the actual number from the year before, because the state budget is voted so much later than our budget. So last year, the state budget, budget, I believe, was voted August fifteenth. Our budget starts July first. So yes, we do capture those funds in the following year.
Can I ask a follow-up question for that?
Yes, you may.
So my follow-up question is, given the realities of the difference between the timing of the state budget and the town budget, if there is additional money allocated by the state, will that money be incorporated into the town budget and the school budget? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, in order to do that, you would have to call a secondary town meeting and appropriate those funds.
Thank you.
Should that be the case, that would be exactly what happens. A question, sir.
Jack, Jack Danowski, four ninety Winter Street. My question relates to the Kittredge School. If we closed the, the Kittredge School, how would that impact the number of students in the other elementary schools?
Thank you very much. We'll see if we can endeavor to get an answer to that question.
We're able to accommodate the others, the students of the Kittredge School and the other four elementary schools. If you notice the slide that I showed with class sizes, our class size range will be between seventeen and twenty-four by moving the students from Kittredge to Franklin, Thompson, Atkinson, and Sergeant.
Follow-up? The twenty-four that you're talking about, is that elementary schools?
That is elementary school. We are not projecting any class to be over twenty-four with all of the Kittredge students dispersed into the elementary schools.
And on that low number?
Seventeen.
So seventeen to twenty-four, so seventeen could be the number.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, did you have anything else you wish to say?
I think this may be our last question in this review session, sir.
Thank you. Ivan Bernikliev, forty-three J.
Come closer to the microphone.
Ivan Bernikliev.
You did. Come closer.
Closer.
Thank you.
Ivan Bernikliev, forty-three J Road.
Welcome.
Thank you. Was the enrollment of German students that was initially expected into the next year considered when determining the overall enrollment used as data for the budget?
Very specific question. Somebody from the school committee?
No, it was not.
Thank you very much. Thank you for this time. We'll now proceed to regular order in terms of commentary, opinion, and as my understanding is, there will be a one, perhaps two amendments. I will, we will deal with them as they were presented to me. The first proposed amendment was presented to me by Mr. Mark Rogers. Mr. Rogers, would you please make your motion from the floor? Identify yourself and make your amendment.
Mark Rogers, Trinity Court. For full disclosure, I have three children who successfully went through the whole school.
Excuse me. Please, we need your amendment first.
First, okay.
No argument at this moment in time.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to amend Article eleven as printed in the warrant and displayed on the screen, changing the North Andover Public Schools line item to sixty-nine million two hundred thousand. And this brings the total education line to seventy million seven hundred and ten thousand, and the total expenditures line to one hundred thirty-six million three hundred and twenty-five thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Thank you very much. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
The motion is made and seconded. The petitioner has asked me for four minutes for presentation. You're welcome to move forward.
Next slide, please. For full disclosure, my wife is a teacher in the school system, not subject to layoffs. Successfully gone through the, the North Andover Public Schools.
Thank you for abiding by those rules of disclosure, sir. And if you restart the clock at four, I'd appreciate it.
And next slide, please. Thank you. For clarity's sake, this table shows that two line items in the school budget are not changing. The Greater Lawrence Technical School and the Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School lines remain unchanged. Next slide, please. What will this amendment do if it passes? It will bring back some teachers and teaching assistants. It will mitigate class size increases, but not return them to prior levels. It will provide more instructional time for some students by eliminating the need for some study halls. What won't it do? It will not level fund our schools, and so bring back all employees who were laid off. It may not change anything with the Kittredge School closing. It won't change the fact that North Andover is in the top twenty of per capita income while being in the bottom twenty-one percent of per pupil expenditures. Next slide, please. To find out what this amendment will cost you as a taxpayer, find your home's value in the left column and read to the right column. On average, according to the Mass Department of Revenue's website, it will cost around ninety-one dollars per household. Next slide, please. Some of you may be asking, can't we do more? Foreign language instruction is all but gone in middle school. My child is moving to another, more crowded school. The answer is no. Proposition two and a half doesn't budge when inflation hits, and we've essentially hit its limit. This amendment is not a Prop. Two and a Half override. We have some free cash left, but using it to pay for ongoing expenses creates structurally unbalanced budgets. Without a Prop. Two and a Half override in the coming year, all town departments will have more and more compressed budgets, causing more layoffs. I urge you to vote yes on this amendment and, and do the best with what we have now. I'm sure there are others here tonight who can speak more eloquently than I on how this will help our schoolchildren.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. We will, if we could show the amended, the track changes of what we're be discussing at this moment, we'll put that up in a moment. We'll now proceed to general discussion about the amendment alone. So the discussion needs to be centered on the amendment. If you have a comment or a question about the amendment alone, please come forward. As we're allowing people to gather, allow me to restate that we are not at capacity in this room. If there's anybody standing at the back of the house, you may not vote. We're at less than seventy percent capacity of this very room, and we will not be opening up another room until we hit capacity in this room. So I ask you to please snuggle in a little bit. And again, there's plenty of space at the front of the privileged space on the floor and in sections thirteen and fourteen, among other spaces that I see. And the first one up was right here on the left.
Deanna Dunn, seventy-three Brentwood Circle.
Welcome.
Sorry?
Welcome.
And no financial gain.
Thank you very much.
I am in favor of Mark Rogers' motion because the devastating budget cuts made to the school budget will directly harm our children. Beyond increasing class sizes at the upper levels, up to thirty-one person, class in the high school, eliminating the middle school language program and reducing the number of languages offered at the high school, strip our students of critical opportunities. The human brain changes after the age of thirteen, making it significantly harder to learn new languages. By removing the majority of the instruction at the middle school in languages, we are closing a crucial window of opportunity that cannot be reopened. My daughter aims to take four years of high school German in pursuit of her aspiration to attend college in Germany, an option that will no longer be available to any North Andover students moving forward. Whether or not she achieves that goal is less important than the fact our school district empowered her to imagine it. That sense of possibility is a direct result of the rich educational environment we have worked hard to create in the past years. By dismantling the language program bit by bit until we just have one language left, we don't just take away academic options, we diminish our children's ambitions. The loss extends beyond languages. The cuts in art, music, creative writing, sports, and special education remove the very teachers who often form the strongest connections with students. These are the educators who inspire support and sometimes even save our kids from falling through the cracks and becoming at risk. These cuts are doing irrevocable damage to the current kids in our district. While rebuilding the programs in the future may be possible, it will be vastly more expensive than sustaining what we have painstakingly built, just like maintaining our homes.
A final, a final sentence, please.
Will, is not only an investment in our children's futures and our town's property values, it's the fiscally responsible choice to make in the long run.
Thank you very much. Sir?
Tim Seibert, forty West Bradstreet Road. I do actually get a.
Closer to the microphone.
I do get a paycheck from the schools, so I do have an interest. I think I saw either in a slide or in the book that our projected revenue was one thirty-five, and now we're talking about spending one thirty-six. And I think I saw on Mr. Rogers' slide, he was not saying that this should come from free cash, and he was not saying that this should come from the TIF. So where, where do we get it?
Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Moderator, through you. The sixty-eight point two million dollar school budget would leave one million dollars, round one million dollars in capacity, levy capacity that we could still raise. The reason that we have advised against doing that is that we know that next year we are only forecasting about a three point one four percent increase to the fiscal year twenty-seven budget for the schools, in that it will result in more cuts if we don't hold that levy capacity to offset the increase in, in the cost of living and steps for next year.
Follow-up?
Please.
So I'm, I'm voting against this. What concerns me about this is that we're in this problem because we have not aligned our funding with our expenses very well, and we need to do it in a more systemic way. And bringing in a million dollars like this, basically taking it away from expenses that we know are coming next year is more bad financial planning. I think it's a bad idea.
Kevin Doobie, seventy-six Boston Hill Road.
Welcome.
They're good?
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. At the January twenty-eighth Select Board meeting, Melissa, the town manager, presented a slide saying that total personnel growth in North Andover Public Schools had gone up about eighty people in the last ten years, or seventeen percent, while the total student enrollment fell seven point five percent. That seems a little backwards. And I did have a couple of questions. Number one, what is the current maximum at the elementary school of a classroom? Does the superintendent know, or is she willing to answer that question?
Let me ask that if you have a series of questions, why don't you ask them all, and then we can get an answer.
I have one other one, and that is to the town manager. Over the next three years, you had shown a slide of what the increases would be. What is the total increase in the taxes? Because they were mentioning it would be like a hundred dollars if we pass this. What is the total increase the average family home is expected to make? I believe it's going to be fourteen hundred plus over the next three years. Is that correct? Those are my questions.
Thank you.
Sure. Pam, first?
Was the question, what's the capacity of each of the elementary schools, or what's the class size?
No, I'm sorry. It's the current maximum class size in an elementary school. You said the, under the new model, it will go between seventeen and twenty-four kids per class. I was asking what the maximum class size currently is at one of our schools.
Yeah, our largest class size, I believe, is twenty-four or twenty-five right now.
So we actually have classes as large as would be.
Conversation through me, please.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator.
And we have a second question, and the town manager may have an answer for you.
Sure. Mr. Harlan, could I have slide forty-three? I think that's the easiest way to answer this.
You want slide forty-three?
Forty-three, please.
Slide forty-three.
So for those of you that have watched my buzzer presentations over the years, you know that I like to follow one house, because I think that shows how impact works the best. Because when you have values that fluctuate, or people who do construction on their homes, it's not always easy for us to follow. So if we look at slide forty-three, that's it. Yep, back up.
We'll all get dizzy in a moment.
Please don't get dizzy.
Here we are.
Okay, so this, what this slide shows is this house on Salem Street that I've been following over the years. So you can see, back in twenty twenty-two, their bill was eight thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars. They are the average family house, fiscal year twenty-five. They are valued at that eight twenty-five number. So what I've done here is, for fiscal year twenty-six, I added the six percent, which would take the bill from ninety-three hundred to the ninety-eight seventy-four. In fiscal year twenty-seven, I added two point five percent. I added the rest of the levy capacity, this one to one point five million dollar number we've been talking about. I used one to be conservative. And then I also added the debt exclusion for Kittredge, because since we're using the levy capacity to now pay for the budget, we no longer have that available to fund Facilities Master Plan Two, namely the Kittredge bond. And then in fiscal year twenty-eight, I add two point five percent, but I give fifty dollars back, because that's when the Amazon TIF starts coming on at the ten percent, and so we'll see the bill actually start to decrease a little bit. So this is what it would look like under the proposed budget.
Thank you very much. Do we have another query or comment? Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Alexis Lessinger. I live at fifty-nine Phillips Court, North Andover. I would like.
Welcome.
Excuse me. I would like to voice my support for this amendment, because I think that if we want to talk about tough conversations, I think that we need to consider the teachers that were pulled from their classrooms in the middle of the day and then told to return to teaching despite not being able to return the following school year. And we should think about how devastating that was to the students, and how meaningful and important to their education it would be if they found out that some of those teachers could come back. Because we talk a lot about this financial strain on everyone right now, but you're teaching the future homeowners of this town, and I think that if we want to consider everyone in this, we need to consider who's being educated right now. And I think a lot of students have made it very clear by their display of the walkout about a month ago, that they feel it is imperative to their education to have these teachers back in their schools, and to have all of those languages taught in their schools, and that all of those teachers made a huge impact on them, and their education will not be the same without them.
If I might, I'm going to ask that we hear first from those people who have not commented on this query in the past or asked a question, and they may do so at the end of the line, if you don't mind. So the gentleman in second in line here will take precedence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David White, Nutmeg Lane.
Welcome.
Thank you. My question, I, I understand the maker of the amendment had some suggestions of how the money could be spent, but I don't think you can actually stipulate that in the amendment. So my question to, I guess, the superintendent would be, how would the school spend the additional money that's? how would the school spend the additional money that's proposed in this amendment?
I'll comment first that uniquely, this body may not dictate the use of specific funds by the school committee. The school committee alone makes that unilateral judgment. There may be an anticipation, however, and will allow the superintendent to elucidate.
Thank you. I want to start by saying we believe that the proposed budget of $68.2 million meets the needs of North Andover Public School students and the district for the fiscal year '26. But if town meeting appropriates additional funds for North Andover Public Schools, I would consult with the school committee, our leadership team, to see what our priorities might be and continue to consult our budget directives. I also think it's important to share with you that I would reserve, look to reserve some of these funds for unforeseen expenses so that we don't find ourselves in the same place we've been in the last two years.
Thank you very much. Please come forward. It's quite all right. My delight.
Good afternoon, Nadia Chinchilla Marto. I do not have a financial interest in supporting this motion.
Good evening.
I am at 64 White Birch Lane. I do not understand how the proposed budget meets the needs of the students when we have had over 40 North Andover educators eliminated. I don't understand how the proposed budget meets the needs of the students when we've eliminated language programs. I don't understand how the current budget supports the needs of the students when we've eliminated teacher assistants, our teachers, reading specialists, et cetera. That was actually not the point of my comment, but I was inspired by Ms. Lathrop's comment about how it meets the needs of the students. I think there's been a lot of questions about per pupil spending, and I don't know that anybody knows the actual data, so I will share it with you. The Finance Committee has indicated, and the members of this town have, I can see by the look on your faces, you've heard me say this, but maybe the residents of the town have not, so for their benefit, I will share it now. The Finance Committee has said that the comparable towns, the comparable North Andover towns are Wilmington, Wakefield, Danvers, North Reading, Bellerica, Tewksbury, Reading, Chumsford. Well, Wakefield spends $20,657 a year per pupil. Danvers spends $20,797. North Reading spends $20,852. Bellerica spends $20,249. Tewksbury spends $21,819. Wilmington spends $24,000 per student. Reading spends $19,000. North Andover spends $18,221. Having anybody state that we spend as much or we are comparable to comparable towns is simply factually inaccurate. Thank you.
Thank you. It seems part of that was directed to commentary that was previously made to the Finance Committee. Perhaps they have a comment.
I would just like to point out that the Finance Committee...
The microphone.
I would just like to point out that the Finance Committee did not make those assertions. Those were presented to our committee by the town manager through research that she had done. That was not research that we did or data that we presented. It was discussed at one of our meetings, and that's it.
Thank you. We have apparently follow-up comment from the superintendent.
In response to my comment about why I believe the $68.2 million meets the needs of our students, we're able to maintain elementary class sizes between 17 and 24. This is not a change from the elementary class sizes that we currently have. We're able to maintain appropriate class sizes in our middle school and our high school. To date, we have not laid off any teaching assistants in North Andover Public Schools. We have also made a priority to special education and as well as mental health. We have listened to the community and we have restored direct language instruction at the middle school. Our eighth grade students will receive Spanish instruction. We have looked at the statistics at the high school, which is why we were able, why we made the hard decision of eliminating German. I'd also like to point out that when our students enter North Andover High School, they have the opportunity to choose between the three languages. Traditionally, between 20 and 30 students are denied their first choice of Spanish because we do not have enough Spanish teachers. And they are then given their second choice, the French and German, which is why we have planned to bring Spanish back to the middle school.
And the manager would like to comment?
Sure. I think this is the slide that the Finance Committee was referring to. And so my office did an exercise where we reviewed our comparative communities. We took the average of those and we compared their per capita spending to North Andover. And that's basically what this slide is doing. And so you can see that, interestingly, our fixed costs are comparable, right? Because those aren't things that we make choices about. But everywhere else, we pretty much see that we have higher spending in our comparable communities than we do in our town departments, in our education, and even in our debt. And so that's the analysis that we performed. The only place, interestingly, that we spend more would be in our human services.
Thank you very much. Question or comment?
Comments. With due respect, my name is Jen Alarud. I live on 39 Franklin Street.
Welcome.
For lack of a better phrase, I live on the post side of town. I live near triplexes. I can see the pizza factory from my door. We hear the firefighters up and down the street. We hear the town train go all hours of the night. I, as a single mother, cannot afford, just with my basic math skills, $2,500 six years from now. That doesn't add, you know, that penny a day, the $100 this year and $100 next year and $200, $300, it just grows and grows and grows. And where is the end of it? I am struggling after being out of work for nine months. And I can very much with confidence tell you that 20% of the room that's empty is because those people rent on the post side of town, near Main Street, or they're taken care of by the state, or they have help from the state, or they're getting help from family. So that average, I don't think is fair. The median should be the mathematical number. My house is 500, and I struggle to make $4,000 a month to pay the taxes, to pay my $2,500 a month to put the roof over my kid's head. I volunteer at a food bank that graciously gives us steak and vegetables so that my kids, that I have 60% of the time, can eat well. And if there's no food left over, well, tough on me because they matter. My kids matter. I grew up in a very rich town, a seaside community. Some of you know of Nantucket. You go to Hulse Beach, right? It used to be rich in the day. We had 35 kids in the class and we're all fine. Bring back the Spanish, bring back the things that matter, and stop the pettiness.
Thank you very much.
Hello. Shannon Gaetley, 40 Phillips Court.
Welcome.
I have no stake, financial stake in the game. Thank you. Hello. I'm here tonight in favor and support of Mark Rogers' warrant. And that's because I think it also affects the future school budgets. Not long ago, the town manager presented her five-year school budget plan at a meeting, and it was extremely concerning to me. And I think it should be concerning and outrage everyone. Her plan was that, well, for FY '25, the budget was $64.9 million. FY '26, $64.1, which is actually lower than the previous year. FY '27, $66.1 million. FY '28, $67.4 million. FY '29, $68.4 million. FY '30, $70.3 million. Let's keep in mind that when we started, even on the slide tonight, that the level service budget was at $71 million, and that was all said to be a disservice and underbudget, and the students deserve more. Now, the average inflation rate is 2.8% each year, which we know will most likely be higher. Are we not trying to add programs back, hire teachers back, create new programs, keep up with our comparable towns so our kids have a comparable, if not better, education? This is also not taking into consideration any other unexpected expenses. And documents have shown that one of the main reasons we're here is because of underbudgeting. And we know that costs like transportation and special education are only going to increase. I also don't see where the cost of hiring new staff, if the new Kittredge is open, if we get the debt exclusion passed next year. This five-year plan shows that we're not even where we're supposed to be currently. Why are we not trying to get where we should be and more? Massachusetts prides itself on education. Why isn't North Andover doing the same? The town manager shouldn't be recommending the school budget. The superintendent and school committee should be calculating what our school needs and telling the town manager their proposed budget, and then the town can decide how and if to make that happen.
A final sentence, please.
Okay, you keep saying it's going to be fine, but fine means okay. And fine, I'm not okay with fine. I want more. Our children, I want my son to be smarter than me, more successful than me. Isn't that what all parents want? And it's the responsibility of us to do what it takes to provide for them.
Thank you for your commentary. Folks, we've been at this. We're approaching an hour, and we have 10 or 11 people in line. I'm going to unilaterally limit people to one minute in terms of commentary at this moment in time. And then, secondly, unless this room is ready to move the question, you'll let me know otherwise. And we'll start over here on the left. One minute, and I apologize. Thank you for your courtesy.
I'm Jennifer Watson. I live at 30 Huckleberry Lane in North Andover.
Welcome.
Thank you. We're all here tonight mostly because we all want high-quality schools in this town. I don't think anyone in this room thinks otherwise. And we're in a crisis situation, having had the school department overspend their budget over the last two years by many millions of dollars. So we're in a position where what are we going to do about it now? We keep hearing per pupil expenditure being the reason we need to spend more money. But I'm going to tell you, I am a data geek, as many of you here know. And looking at the data from DESI, per pupil expenditure alone does not correlate with MCAS, which is a measure of school's performance. It matters how you spend that money. It is not just per pupil expenditure. So right now, we have a new team in place with a new superintendent and her team. And I think we can't start her off by crippling her with a budget that's going to send the school into crisis mode only. But we have to be fiscally responsible and give her a chance to figure out what the right size of the budget is. And the $68.2 million recommended budget by the school committee, the superintendent, and the Finance Committee is what we should move forward with to be responsible.
Thank you for your commentary.
My name is Eric Swersky. I live at 90 Herrick Road.
Welcome.
Thank you. So I want to voice support for the amendment. I think an investment in universal and free education is necessary investment in a greater society and a better future, one we all benefit from. There will come a time in the lives of everyone here that you will be taken care of by other people's children. Don't you want them to have the best education we can possibly provide? I do. And if that means we'll pay a little bit more in taxes for the future of this town, for the future of this state, I am fully in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome to come forward, sir. There are people who have not spoken before and have something new to add to the conversation. Sir.
Thank you. Adam Marto, 64 White Birch Lane.
Welcome.
No financial interests, but a daughter in the first grade at the Kittredge School. I wanted to voice support for Mark Rogers' amendment. In short, I'm in support of any amount of more money for the schools, but the more, the better, as far as I'm concerned. I'm an educator, a teacher at a high school, not here in North Andover, an urban district outside of Boston. And I personally see the effect of large class sizes, classes up to 33, 34 students. And I can see, you know, it's nowhere near the quality of education for a 17-person classroom. I can't see any greater good than educating the children of a town. It's as simple to me as the children literally are the future. As the gentleman before me said, they are who will be taken care of all of us in the future. And I support any amount of money going towards the schools that will help educate our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm unilaterally closing the line, so no more speakers other than those who are in line unless there's a quantified motion to move the question. Something new to say, sir?
Hi, Alejandro Saravia, High Street, North Andover.
Welcome.
Room 350 here in the high school. Well, my time was cut in half, so I will say something very specific.
I know you can handle it.
The, I spent seven years researching, doing my PhD in school council, in school administration and school leadership. And I learned that the most effective way to increase performance in students is not money, is how parents involve in their education. So whether it fits more time, more money or less money is not the point. I think the point is priorities. And my question is not here, but it's behind me. At the end of the day, are you going to go home and say to your children or your neighbors, because probably you don't have children here, I voted for the money or I voted for you, the children? There's a big difference. Are we taking care of the money? Are we taking care of our children? They are the future. Money comes here and there. Thank you.
Erin Harris, Stevens Street. I'm here in support of the amendment to increase the budget for our schools because I think it's the right thing to do for our schools, but also because I firmly believe it is the fiscally responsible thing to do. By using our levy capacity to fully fund our schools, we ensure the financial future of our town. We heard during earlier presentations that the overwhelming majority of revenue in this town comes from residential real estate taxes, more than 80% of it. And we saw that revenue is projected to be stagnant in the years to come. So how do we increase our revenue? We increase it with thriving home sales, increased home values. People don't move here for an easy commute to Boston. They don't move here for beachfront views. You move here for the schools. It's why I came here, and that decision wouldn't have happened with this budget proposal. Fund our schools and you fund our town for the future. Thank you.
Town manager has a quick comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick clarification. So when property values that we have increase, right? When your house value increases, we actually don't increase our tax levy. I wish we did, because that would be nice. Instead, your tax rate goes down, right? It's almost a scale. So as values go up, the rate goes down. And as the rate goes up, values go down. But we don't get to have an increased levy because your property values increase.
Thank you very much. Folks who have not made commentary in the past, thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Luz, I live on Thistle Road. Amendment, and I will not repeat all of the many good things that have been said. But I do have one comment and one question. My daughter is currently in eighth grade or taking German. And the German teacher put on this lovely show the other day, inviting parents in to see the joy that these children had in the language that they are learning. It's a beautiful thing. That project, that class is going away. She will not have the opportunity to take it in high school. No kids will. What the changes mean is a real fundamental change in the middle school. And what my question to you is that we've heard this in terms of class sizes, but not what those classes actually look like. And so what I have heard from teachers I've spoken to at the middle school is that not only are teachers being reassigned to teach things that they don't feel qualified to teach, but that there are people in the school building who are not actually teachers who will be put in different positions and asked to lead classes. And that students will be, instead of in academic or related arts classes, spending more time in study halls or non-academic. So my question to you is, could you please talk a little bit about what that experience looks like for the middle schoolers? And will they be losing or being, are people who are not qualified as teachers being asked to?
We hear the question. Let's see if we can endeavor to get an answer.
Every one of our teachers that has been moved to a new position is qualified to be moved into... moved into that position. They hold the appropriate certification for that position. That holds true for any teacher that's moving from the middle school to the high school and any positions that may change at the middle school. Our middle school staff was given the opportunity to participate in a survey to let us know what classes they might like to teach if they weren't able to teach the class that they have been currently in. Sometimes I want to say that through hardship, something good happens. One of the good things that I believe has happened is it's made us take a hard look at our middle school schedule. We have been able to add classes of literacy, digital literacy, ELA within the core structure. We have a thread line going through sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. There are some good and creative classes that are coming out of this. I'm not sure if I answered all of your questions.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Moderator, David Brown, 35 Old Farm Road. I am an elected member of the school board and also on the Fields Committee, but I'm speaking as a citizen.
Welcome.
I just want to add a little bit of detail behind what Ms. Monroe said about per pupil spending. I teach business analytics at Merrimack College, and I've studied that in depth, and I've looked at DESI's cohort of comparable districts to ours. There are 11 such districts, including many of the ones that were mentioned before. And I did a data regression on performance in MCAS for ELA, science, and math. And not only is it not correlated, it's actually negatively correlated in general. In other words, the districts that are spending more are getting less performance. So you can't just throw money at this problem. The point I want to make is that you have to spend intelligently, not just focus on per pupil dollars spent, because it doesn't actually jive. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ivan Perniklev, 43 J Road. As a German student, I have come very well to realize all that will be lost, not because it will directly impact me, but because as a senior, I know what these four years in German brought to me as a student. The German program has stood as a beacon for interactive learning through our club, honor society, and international trips that we take every two years. And as a member of the student leaders, I am familiar with the enrollment challenges we have in the previous years, and that was the main thing we have targeted this year. And I believe the results were pretty significant, and I believe this is the issue that they weren't taken into consideration when ultimately deciding parts of these teacher cuts. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to vote on the previous question. Mr. Moderator.
If you'll forgive me one moment.
Sure.
Please come forward and state why you wish to come forward.
I'd like to make a motion, if one is necessary, to vote on the previous question or Article 11 at this point.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I'd like to make a motion, if one is necessary, to vote on Article 11 at this point.
Yeah, that's not necessary. We're going to move to that in any case, but thank you for your appreciation.
Thank you.
My delight. So at this moment, I'm going to declare that discussion over the amendment to Article 11 is over. We are checking a little bit of math here at the table, so give us a moment. We'll put that track changes amendment up, and then we'll move to a vote, okay? If we can display the amendment. So we see what the motion is in effect, is to increase the school budget and then the follow-on education budget and town budget in total by $1 million. Are we clear on what we're voting for? If you're in favor of the amendment, please raise your green card with your banded hand. Keep them up. Okay, you may put them down. If you are not in favor of the amendment, please raise your green card. I declare that the amendment passes by majority, which is all that's necessary. Now, it's my understanding that there is a second proposed amendment that has been presented to me. Do the petitioners of that amendment wish to make such? If the petitioners of that amendment who proposed and sent to me a second amendment wish to make it, please present themselves at this moment. Okay, it's not necessary to withdraw something unless never hit the table, so we will not be looking at anything else. So now we have a new main motion, and the new main motion in effect adds $1 million to that which is printed in your warrant. Is there any need for discussion of the new main motion? I hear no need for discussion of the main motion. Are we clear on what that main motion is? All those in favor of the new main motion, please raise your green card. You may put it down. All those not in favor of the new main motion, please raise your green card. I declare that the main motion is passed by a majority vote. We are now going to move to Article 16. May we have a brief explanation?
Do you want me to move it first?
Sure. Thank you.
No problem. Mr. Moderator, I would move to transfer $2.2 million, $300,000 from free cash to the fiscal year 2025 general fund budget to offset the deficits of the North Andover Public Schools.
So motion has been made. That means somebody seconded it, please. Anybody, thank you very much. The motion is made and seconded. We're going to have a brief explanation by the manager and the superintendent. Three minutes sufficient, ladies?
Yes, that's all we need.
Three minutes, thank you.
The North Andover Public School is requesting $2.3 million from free cash to close the budget deficit for fiscal year 2025. Several factors have contributed to this shortfall, including rising fixed costs, increase in out-of-district tuition and transportation, and the compounding effects of prior-year structural deficits. While these pressures have created significant challenges, we are confident that the changes recently implemented by our accounting policies and financial practices will strengthen our ability to manage resources moving forward. These improvements include more detailed expense tracking, enhanced reporting procedures, and a system that allows for better real-time monitoring of costs. Together, these steps provide greater financial clarity and improve our ability to identify trends or unforeseen expenses earlier in the fiscal year. These changes have also informed our FY '26 budget process. We believe this request is a responsible step towards closing the FY '25 gap while also laying the groundwork for stronger financial management and long-term stability in North Andover Public Schools. Thank you.
This is the most important article that you will vote on tonight. If this transfer does not pass, the town will risk being in appropriation deficit, which means that we can vote our budget $2.3 million less. So I want to make sure people are very clear that this really is probably the most, we're losing it there, important thing that we are going to do. This applies to both Article 16 and 14. If we decided that we wanted to end the year in appropriation deficit, we would have an inability to raise our tax levy next year, we'd have a reduction in free cash, and it would impact our bond rating and financial stability. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or commentary about Article 16? Seeing none? Oh, yeah, sorry about that. Let's make the, let's ask the recommendation of the Finance Committee first.
Recommend favorable action.
Favorable action. The recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action.
And the recommendation of the School Committee?
School Committee recommends favorable action.
I think we're ready for a vote, ladies and gentlemen. All those in favor of Article 16, as displayed, please raise your card. You may put it down. All those opposed, raise your card. I declare a supermajority. Article 7.
I move that the town...
One moment, one moment before you do. I want to let you know that Article 7 and 9 may be in part discussed together, as there is some overlap on a subset of each. If that's the case, I will allow reference to Article 9, but we'll only have one motion at a time, and that's the motion that the Chair of the Finance Committee is about to make.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would move that the town hereby appropriate the aggregate amount of $13,54,999 to fund the capital projects identified in Article 7, as printed in the warrant, displayed on the screen, and the amount designated for each project to pay all costs incidental and related to such, each such project.
The motion is made and seconded. Thank you. You're all getting good at this. I thank you for that. We have a short presentation by the manager. Ma'am, how much time do you need?
Five minutes, and I'd like to ask Athletic Director...
Five minutes, you're very welcome to it.
I'd like to ask Athletic Director Steve Nugent to join me at the podium, please.
Please.
Thank you.
We'll start the clock in a moment.
Okay, so tonight we are presenting to you the town's fiscal year '26 capital improvement plan, and all of our items that cost more than $25,000 and have a life of longer than five years. What we vote on tonight is how we fund those projects. What we do every year is we meet as department heads in schools, we submit and prioritize our requests together. This year, for fiscal year '26, we have $13 million in projects, 45 of them total. Many of those 45 projects are multi-year projects, and so you see them over and over again because we're doing a lot of maintenance. Understanding that we are in a difficult fiscal year, it is very important for us to continue to maintain our assets. Often, we get notified that things are not working well, or that we have deficiencies in our fields or in our buildings, and we need to make sure that we continue to invest in those. This is tonight's funding plan. We are using 4.6 of our $9.7 million in free cash. As you know, free cash is a little bit like the town's savings account. I like to call it our tax return in some ways. It's extra money that we use for one-time expenditures only. We have Chapter 90, which is our state funding for roads, at $850,000. We have capital stabilization at $3.6 million. The current budget in that balance in that account is just over $9 million, and that money can only be spent for capital projects. We have $1 million within the operating budget that we reserve for capital. We'll be using $1.3 million from retained earnings for water, which is like the free cash of the water department, and $1.5 million in retained earnings for sewer, which is like the free cash of the sewer department. Both of those accounts are also limited in purpose as well, for total capital spending of non-debt of $13 million. Mr. Nugent joins me to talk more about the Fields Master Plan and is prepared to answer any questions, and has slides that we can show you as we go along, so you can learn more about those. These are the other projects that fall into infrastructure. The Select Board had a goal this year of increasing our roads funding by 25%, so that is reflected here. We also have our regular playground improvements, a public address system here at the high school, and the repair of a damaged outfall pipe that was damaged during our August storms. This is, shows the plan of the high school fields. We will talk more about that later. I do want to tell you that that has already been permitted by CONCON and Planning Board and BID, so we do have good prices on that project. We also have funding for our buildings. This year, we have the continued rollout of Facilities Master Plan 2 with design for an addition to the youth center. It's a 5,750-foot, square-foot addition to provide for our space needs and to enhance our program requirements. We have drainage programs, high school auditorium improvements, flooring. These are all the things that we do to maintain our buildings and keep them in good order. We have $1.6 million worth of equipment. That includes our rolling stock. It includes our IT equipment, things like security cameras, radios for our fire department, new textbooks, and vehicles. Our sewer capital improvement plan, which again is paid for by the Enterprise Fund, is a sewer rate study, improvements to our systems, a 10-wheel dump truck, and our rapid TV inspection setup. We have $3.6 million in retained earnings in sewer. Our water, we have a water rate study, lead service line replacement. Some of you may have gotten letters about that at home, upgrades to our water distribution plants, improvements to our water treatment plants, the demolition of 400 Great Pond Road, which we'll talk about in a future article, and a mini excavator. If all of the free cash articles that have been proposed by the town pass at the end of this night, we'll have $2.2 million in free cash that would be carried over to the next fiscal year. What happens is that on June 30th, those funds kind of disappear, and then they all get recertified. Okay, we're ready for discussion, Mr. Moderator.
So is there any discussion about Article 7? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Nate Sullivan. I live at 264 Andover Street. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I come before you today asking you to vote yes to the new field complex. I'll be graduating from North Andover High School in less than a month. I've lived here for 12 years. I'm a three-sport captain, and I won Miss North Andover this year. I love this town. I'm extremely passionate about this town. I care about this town. I'll never get to play or get to practice on these fields, but I, like so many other 18-year-olds today who decided to proudly attend their very first town meeting and voting yes to the complex because we care about the future of our town. We care about a safe playing surface for our baseball team to consistently play on. We care about our kindergarten soccer players that use this field. We don't want them walking through goose poop like it's landmines, and we certainly don't want them to roll their ankles on the uneven ground. And we care about providing our league championship softball team with their very first on-campus field in program history. And most of all, we care about building something that years from now, we can look at and say, "I am proud that the letters N-A are on that field." And I too, like so many of you here today, voted in favor of increasing the school's budget to save our teachers. Voting yes to both of these motions is possible, because the money granted by the state to build this new field complex can legally only be used for facilities and not be used for teacher salaries. Tonight, I will be voting yes to the field complex for the future of North Andover. Tonight, I'll be voting yes for the health and safety for all children that learn to love the game of soccer on this field. Tonight, I'll be voting yes for the North Andover baseball player that broke his teeth because of the divots in our current field. Tonight, I'll be voting yes for the little girl who has only ever seen the North Andover baseball field but will be able to walk onto our campus and know that she too belongs. Tonight, I will be voting yes to the field complex, and I encourage you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I know that many people would like to speak. Registered voters take precedence, I'm sorry. So if there's any registered voter who has not spoken this evening, please come to the front of the line. Before you speak, sir, I have representation that a party wished to make an amendment to this article. Does that party wish to do so? So I'm going to ask you to accept yourself for a moment. If you please come forward and identify yourself.
Lynn Langton, 10 Sari Drive.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to amend Article number 7, item number 1, the Fields Master Plan implementation from $3.2 million to $2.7 million. That would also decrease the general fund by $500,000 and the total capital request line... request line from, decreased by five hundred thousand, and the footnote from three point six million to three point one million.
Thank you very much. We're going to put that up on the screen, if we might. The amended motion. Not that one. Article seven. There we are. Okay, so we have an amendment in front of us. We're going to speak now only about the amendment. The petitioner has asked for three minutes. Is that sufficient?
Yes, please.
Please go forward and speak only about your amended article.
Mr. Moderator, the decreased amount of five hundred thousand dollars reflects the savings that would be achieved from installing natural grass instead of artificial turf.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are a respectful group dealing with all of our neighbors. We will act that way. Please.
I just want to say that I am for the replacement of the current rundown, disgraceful high school field. I'm with you on that. No coach should have to use their personal day to prep the field. No other towns should refuse to come and play here. I understand that. I understand we need a new field. My son played on it ten years ago, and it was in terrible condition then, and I know that it's in terrible condition now. The youth in this town, whether they be an athlete or a band member, deserve a high-quality, safe field to play on. That's not in dispute. What is in dispute is the surface they will be playing on. A year ago, at town meeting, the recplex was defeated in part due to the choice of artificial turf, and I was one of those that spoke out against it. I used to be a proponent of artificial turf, until the following happened. On a ninety-degree-plus day, my daughter was playing for a state title on the turf field in Lancaster, and she was pulled off the field due to the heat. Some of her teammates' cleats were melting. I had no idea that artificial turf is, on average, at least forty degrees hotter than natural grass. So I tested this out myself. On July second this past summer, the outside air temperature was eighty-three degrees. I bought an infrared temperature gun, and I measured the temperature on the high school turf field, and it was a hundred and fifty-two degrees Fahrenheit. At a hundred and twenty-two, at a hundred twenty degrees, two seconds of contact can produce burns. And at a hundred and fifty degrees, third-degree burns can occur within a few seconds of contact, according to the experts from China's hospital. Third-degree burns goes through all three layers of the skin and nerve endings. On May twenty-fourth, about a year ago, eleven children from Lynn, Massachusetts, were taken to the hospital with heat-related illnesses during an athletic event. Lynn's district fire chief has quoted saying, "The heat is beating on the ground here. It's a synthetic turf field." How many B M members have fainted on our high school athletic field? How many of our children have blisters or have had turf burns? Vote for this amendment. Natural grass costs less, does not damage the environment, and is safer for our young athletes.
Thank you very much. For clarity's sake, I want you to know that I heard a second to that motion, so the amendment is properly before us. Now, do we have anybody who wishes to speak, who is a registered voter and priority first? Only about the amendment. Only about the amendment. Sir?
Hi there. Adam Magny, ninety-two Colonial Avenue.
Welcome.
Um, you know, I wish we had this crowd here last year, but in terms of this amendment, I just want to say, what you just heard was a cherry-picked narrative that is not based on any conclusive scientific evidence. Okay? And I think there are a lot of people in this room that are sick of hearing, you know, that artificial turf is dangerous to our kids and the environment. We're sick of hearing that, um, you know, and, and overall, folks, those of you here in this room are smart enough to realize, this isn't just about a place to play sports. We need artificial turf because we've got too many games and not enough fields, right? But it's not just about a place to play sports. It's about a place to gather as a community. It's about a place to learn life lessons. It's about a place to make memories. So I'm sick of hearing that we can't have artificial turf here in North Andover. One, it's good enough for the New England Patriots. It's good enough for all our neighbors. It's already here in town, and it's everywhere else. We need to move forward with this, folks. Our kids need it, and we appreciate your support on this. Thanks. I reject this amendment.
Is there any other registered voter who wishes to speak specifically about this motion? The amendment only, sir.
You got it. Ken Martin, fifty-two North Cross Road.
Welcome.
I just wanted to talk about the amendment, grass versus turf. We live in the Northeast. It's impossible to maintain fields, particularly at the time you have to play, in a safe way. I don't know how many kids have blisters on their feet, but I do know that there was a senior last year that had to go to prom with a front tooth missing. And that's just a fact. You need safe fields. You need fields where you can play through tough weather. You need fields that can be consistently maintained, because the grass fields cannot be maintained. The grass fields are covered in goose excrement, and our kids come home with it all over their hands, all over their clothes. It's disgusting. We should have turf fields, eighty percent, I did the Google search before I got up here, roughly eighty percent of Division One baseball fields are artificial turf. Those include fields down in Tennessee, Florida, where it's a lot hotter than it is up here. I have no knowledge of people coming home with multiple-degree burns, but I do know for a fact that people are hurting themselves on our grass fields here, because they're not maintained, and quite frankly, it's impossible to maintain them. So I would like to, to suggest we should vote against the amendment, because we need fields that are safe for our kids, and we need fields that can get general use all year round, regardless of, of, you know, our ability to maintain the fields. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Keith Connors, Four Village Green Drive.
Come closer to the microphone, sir, and welcome.
Sure. Keith Connors, Four Village Green Drive. I stand here as a strong proponent of our youth and of the new playing fields. In this capacity, I fully support this motion. I love that this motion protects the funds necessary for the installation of new playing fields, while prioritizing the health and well-being of our kids with its argument for natural grass over the more costly and dangerous artificial turf. So I'm clear about this. I'm for the youth and for the fields. What particularly caught my attention was the heat island phenomenon. With the heat rising from artificial turf forty to sixty degrees higher than the temperature from natural grass during sunny days over eighty-five degrees Fahrenheit, and with the number of days over eighty-five degrees steadily increasing due to global warming, it stands to reason, youth playing time with artificial fields will decrease, and that it harms them because of the, the increased heat on their bodies, and they can't regulate it as well at this younger age. I'll just give you one example. One town I read about already recognizes this problem. The school board in Burlington, Massachusetts, seeking to protect its athletes, implemented a policy that limits or prohibits play on artificial turf when air temperature is about eighty-five degrees, above eighty-five. Ironically, athletic play at Burlington is moved from artificial turf to natural grass during such days. I imagine the residents of Burlington wish they were at the junction we are right now with the decision to support a motion for natural grass over artificial turf. I'm grateful to support a motion that places the health and well-being of our youth at its center, and promotes a plan that doesn't create heat islands or harmful toxins, and is less expensive for the citizens of our town. I stand with the youth, and I stand for new playing fields that are natural grass. Thank you.
Thank you. Commentary?
Mr. Moderator?
Final comments, if I might?
Mr. Moderator?
Excuse me. Final comments, if I might, relative exclusively to the amendment. I'm going to ask a priority to the stage.
Yes, I was just wondering if it would be possible for the Board of Health to come up and give their opinion about the use of turf, because they have issued a letter?
I have no objection to that.
Thank you. I believe two of the members of the Board of Health are here, as well as the Health Director. If you could pull the slides back up for a second, I can bring their... And I will add, as they're walking up, that the Conservation Commission also put in their conditions that we had to ensure unlimited chemical contamination in our turf-filled materials, and certify that those products used in the turf and infill meet or exceed expectations. And we've also agreed to install composite board along the bottom of our chain link fence, as well as boot scraping units at all exits. Yeah, I'm just gonna...
Briefly, our Board of Health?
Sorry, I'm trying to get past this one to them.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're stuck on, um, a flood. It is slide twenty-five, John.
Please.
Jen Abuezi, twenty-two Montero Way. Jen Abuezi, twenty-two Montero.
Michelle Davis, one twenty-seven Carterfield Road, also on the Board of Health.
Brian the Grass, Health Director.
Welcome. If you have a comment, please make it.
We looked through hundreds of pages of research, here and overseas, of through anyone that uses artificial turf. And as the letter stated, we, high levels of heat do elevate slightly on the field. Sorry, I don't have my glasses with me. They were more pronounced in direct sunlight, but were reduced with cloud cover and shaded areas. The use of alternative materials as infill can mitigate this elevated temperature. So our recommendations that people who play on the fields in the heat have adequate warnings, that other people, like umpires, coaches, referees, are educated on heat-related injuries. And basically, we've had other fields in this town for several years without any incidents. That's it.
Thank you. Is there any other commentary? We have one minute, plus forty-five seconds.
Okay. The Board also discussed that we feel that the exercise and getting kids outside on the fields outweighs any negatives we were able to find from the turf field.
Hi there. One of the biggest concerns is called the shoulder months. That's when, it's the spring and the fall. You don't really get eighty-five-degree days in April and May. You do in the dead of summer, and we do recommend adopting an MIA policy that limits playing time during those extreme heat hours. So that can be monitored, and we can have devices that can actually monitor that, if we want to look into that. It's an easy policy to adopt.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we're about ready for a vote. One or two final question, one or two final commentaries? I'll allow these two... Excuse me? Please. I'm sorry, and before you, the gentleman has been patiently waiting. I apologize.
Troy DeKesian, one ninety-eight Dale Street. I'll make this very quick. I played on the baseball team for several years until I graduated last year, and from personal experiences, both the baseball and softball team have had to work very hard to try to get the fields ready, and they have absolutely never been ready on time, and games have been pushed over more and more towards the end, and months in the dead of summer, and that's when we play those hot games. And we've ended up playing those hotter games at away teams like Boston College High School, Lynn Field, those teams with turf fields, and the heat has never been a problem for our teams. Yeah, it's just, we've worked so hard to try to get the fields ready, and they've never been ready for those times, and we've never had any issues with hotter conditions on those hotter fields. Plus, the wind at our fields is one of the windiest fields in the state, and I feel like that would also mitigate the issue of the heat. That's all.
Hello. Autumn Rose Lester, Sharpners Pond Road.
Well-
Thank you. I, upon hearing what different residents have shared, I became concerned about the potential for the PFAS chemicals and, you know, forever chemicals that can come from artificial turf. I actually did a little research on my phone. Boston actually banned artificial turf in parks due to the toxic forever chemicals. And so although I highly support, you know, this, the need for all of this complex and everything, and upgrades needed, I do not support the artificial turf, just because of the concern for the environment that I think so many of us here care about. Thank you.
Thank you for your commentary. I suspect that we are ready for a vote. Is that, am I correct? Am I reading the room correctly? Recognizing that, we are voting only on the amendment. The amendment is to cut five hundred thousand dollars from line one, and with the suggestion that that savings in money not be used on turf fields. So all those in favor of the amendment, please raise your green card with your banded Okay, you may put it down. All those opposed to the amendment, please raise your hand. I declare it a supermajority vote. To that end, we are back to the main motion. I'm going to ask for the Board's recommendations. We'll start with the Finance Committee.
We recommend favorable action.
And the Select Board?
Favorable action.
And the School Committee?
Favorable action.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, are we ready to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of the main motion as presented on the screen and in the warrant, you're in front of me, raise your green card. You may put them down. All those opposed, please raise your card. I declare it a supermajority vote. Well done. Do I have a motion on Article nine? Mr. Callahan?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Bill Callahan, twenty-three Lyman Road.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve Section nine, as shown on the screen and displayed for you.
Article nine has been moved. Is there a second? Okay, I understand that Mr. Callahan's Chair of the Committee needs up to five minutes to discuss, and that we have a presentation that will be loaded for you. If you're going to be leaving the room, please do so very quietly, for the courtesy of others who are remaining. Please go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. I'm here with the recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee for FY26 cycle. I'm here on behalf of the committee, and I'll move through to the next slide. Very quickly, I'll give an overview of the program. It's a surtax of three percent on your property taxes, and there are two exemptions. One is on the first hundred thousand of your home value, and second is a low-income, elderly and disabled exemption, full exemption, which can be applied for with the Board of Assessors. Over the years, this program has been very good for us, to us as a, as a town. We've spent about forty-seven million dollars preserving various things around the town. We've gotten fifteen million dollars from the state, which is really a great testament to this program. There are three categories of projects: open space and recreation, historic preservation, and affordable housing. Those are the only things that we can spend these funds on. It's a separate fund. It cannot be used in the operating budget or for other capital needs at all, and that's by state legislation. And these projects are proposed by people in the community, so I would urge any of you who have projects or are interested in these areas to come to the committee with your projects next year in the fall and over the winter when we see the projects. Next slide, please. What I wanted to do today was talk a little bit about what our current available funds are, and then how much we're proposing to spend this year. As you can see, we have a fund balance of eighteen million, a little over eighteen million dollars. We have about ten encumbered for projects that have been approved but not completed yet. We also get income every year. That's over on the right side of the slide. We get interest income, which has been increased with interest rates. We collect the surcharge, the three percent surcharge, on the property taxes. We get matching funds from the State Trust Fund. We've estimated this very conservatively. We've estimated this very conservatively, so we're, we come up with about $3.3 million per year, which would mean between what we have and what we'll get next year, we have about $11.8 million to spend. Next slide, please. We're proposing projects this year totaling an amount of $2,948,774. We have projects in each of those areas. We have majority of the projects in historic preservation this year. We have two projects for open space and recreation. One is for the tennis courts of the high school, and that's part of a project. Those are in terrible disrepair. We're also putting up some signage at Windrush Farms. And as you can see, we have a number of historic preservation projects. The two most notable in dollars are the Second Burial Ground, which houses, which is the final resting place for many of the town's most notable citizens, Revolutionary War veterans and so forth, and also money for the Stevens Estate Stables, which is going to be the anchor for sort of recreation activities up at Stevens Estate with the trail network up there. That's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Give lessons to other people who give presentations. Much appreciated. Do we have any discussion on this item? Let's ask for recommendations. The Finance Committee?
Favorable action.
The Select Board?
Favorable action.
And the Planning Board?
The Planning Board recommends favorable action.
Thank you. A majority vote is what is required. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your green card. You may put them down. All those opposed, raise your green card. I declare it a very supermajority vote. We are moving now to Article eight. Is there a motion for Article eight?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town votes to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow $2,180,000 for the purposes of improvements to the water treatment plant and the demolition of 400 Gray Pond Road. The...
Mr. Moderator, there, there's an amended motion. I'll pass it down. Make sure he has it.
Sorry.
Apologies.
Have a conversation. A little conference. Excuse us, ladies and gentlemen. All right, so we're in the interest of getting things right, we're going to start all over again?
Apologies.
No, it's not your, anyone's fault.
This is a long one, so I apologize in advance.
You can just relate as displayed on the screen if it's, if it's available.
I'm not sure that it is.
Mr. Moderator, Bund Council requires us to read it in its entirety.
Ah.
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'm corrected for the first time tonight, so I'm proud of that.
It's the first time for everything, Mr. Moderator. It doesn't happen often. I move that the town votes to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow an amount not to exceed $2,180,000 for the purposes of making improvements to the water treatment plant and the demolition of building located at 400 Gray Pond Road, or to take any other action relative thereto that, to meet this appropriation. The treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and to authorize the town manager to enter into any contracts necessary to carry out said projects. I thought I'd at least get a polite applause for that, but... Thank you. Thank you very much.
Would you like to?
No, Mr. Moderator, I yield the floor back to you.
Thank you. The motion is made and seconded. We have a three, a three-minute presentation by our Director of Public Works. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Stanford, DPW Director. As mentioned, this is Article eight, Water Capital Improvements, the debt authorization. It is a short-term debt of five years, only because it does include demolition. That's what we're limited to. It involves two primary projects: upgrades to the water treatment plant of $1,180,000, demolition of... ...Pond Road at a cost of $1 million. The water treatment plant actually has three parts to it. One is the finished water pump. The other is to replace the lower lift station, and then an engineer, engineering report and study for the generator replacement. All of these are for the main water treatment plant. They're very important components to provide safe water to the community. The next part is removal of the house structure at 400 Gray Pond Road. It's actually $1 million, and it involves removing the house, removing the stone wall, or excuse me, rebuilding the stone wall and foundation, stone foundation, and also includes structural material to fill the foundation to make the level area. And again, it's a cost of $1 million. Just the project history on it, back in 2022, this body appropriated funds and authorization to purchase the property, as well as they requested that we put in a steering committee, which the Board of Selectmen did move forward with. The committee met over the course of a year and evaluated every option, including removing the house, rebuilding the house, as well as possibly selling the property. Number one of their priorities was to protect the water supply, provide for open space, respect the appropriate levels of historic preservation, and provide recreation opportunities with respect to principle one and first and foremost fiscal responsibility. The committee did look at a number of different options, as I mentioned, but came with the recommendation to remove the house structure, remove the detached garage, repair the stone wall, fill in the foundation and repair the wall as mentioned, create a small parking area, and consider future improvements. I would say that this is probably one of the most pristine views you're going to get of Lake Kachikowick, which is our major water source, our only water source for, for the town. This article will fund phase, the first phase, one, three, and four of the recommendation, which removes the structure, repairs the wall, and then fills in the foundation for future. We'd be back at a later date for future funding of the next phases. We're currently using the garage structure for storage of the fire department, police department, and public works, and we're going to be using that for the foreseeable future. But in the, but once we have enough storage with other facility projects, we would move forward with the recommendation for the rest of the report from the committee.
Thank you very much. Do we have any discussion about this item? We'll move directly then to recommendations of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action.
And the Finance Committee?
Favorable action.
And the Planning Board?
Favorable action.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I think we're ready. A two-thirds vote is required. I have the authority to make that determination. All those in favor, please raise your card with your banded hand.
Thank you.
You may put them down. Thank you. All those opposed? Clearly, a two-thirds majority is so declared. Thank you very much. We'll now move to Article 14. Please.
Mr. Moderator, I would move to adopt Article 14 as printed in the warrant and displayed on the screen.
Motion is made and seconded. Have we a brief discussion from the table?
Very brief, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
The balance in this account is $65,923.81. It will be used to offset the deficit of the North Andover Public Schools to fiscal year '25. It will leave the stabilization fund at zero.
Can we move to recommendations? The Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable action.
And the Select Board's recommendation?
Favorable action.
And the School Committee's recommendation?
Favorable action.
Do we have any discussion? One more time. All those in favor, please raise your card. You may put them down. All those opposed? It is a unanimous vote. Thank you. Article 15. We're cooking with gas, folks.
Ready?
Thank you.
Motion?
Yep, I would move to adopt Article 15 as printed in the warrant and displayed on the screen.
Motion is made?
Seconded.
And seconded. A brief explanation from the table?
Yes, very brief. As part of the town's long-term plan, we are advocating to solve the Special Education Stabilization Fund. It has proven to be difficult for the town because we have trouble accessing it. We can only get to it now at a town meeting, which leaves us in the danger of having a deficit for the end of the year. We feel that using the Finance Committee Reserve is a much better plan. It's less restrictive in terms of use and amounts. The Select Board and Finance Committee have already agreed and amended their policies to earmark $250,000 of the Special Education, of the, sorry, of the Finance Committee Reserve to be used for special education costs up to $250,000 a year. Currently, in the Special Education Stabilization Fund, they are only able to use 250, so that is actually more funds that will be available every two years. The long-term plan is to add a FinCom reserve as we look for, I'm sorry, the long-term plan is to add a stabilization reserve as we look for a funding source of that. But continuing to use a stabilization fund to fund annual sped deficits isn't really the best use, and so we really would like to go with the Finance Committee Reserve instead.
Okay, it looks like we have some discussion that is desired. Sir?
Mark Rogers, Trinity Court. I'd like to vote no on this article for the only reason of keeping our options open, not to fund it. There's a companion, Article 28, that I put forward that I'm going to take no action on, or vote, ask the town to take no action on. And I'd like to have a year or so using the current, the new method that the town manager has suggested and that all the boards have approved. It is a better plan than the current plan, but I'd like to leave our options open, so I urge people to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you for your commentary, sir. Ma'am?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. My name is Sasha Weinrich, and I live at 21 Sawyer Road.
Welcome.
I am speaking tonight in my capacity as a president of the North Andover Special Education Parents Advisory Council, otherwise known as CPAC. Our executive committee would like to urge our fellow citizens to vote, as we already did, yes, on Article 14, to vote in favor of closing the Special Education Stabilization Fund, given that it's redundant, I'll get to that, and vote no on Article 28, which Mr. Rogers already said he will be requesting we take no action on. Why? The current Special Education Stabilization Fund, as our town manager stated, has strict limitations. Transfers are capped at $250,000 per year and $400,000 over two years, two consecutive years, which restricts our funding in the second year to only $150,000. Funds are limited to out-of-district placements and transportation costs only, and requests are only allowed once a year at town meeting, even if our costs arise at an earlier time. The Select Board and Finance Committee have revised our financial reserve policies in order to offer us a better solution, which includes up to $250,000 annually available for unforeseen special education costs with no two-year cap set aside from the Finance Committee Reserve. This allows for broader use as well, not just for out-of-district placements or transportation costs, and it allows us to have quicker access to funds when needed. It does not require a vote at town meeting at the end of the year after those funds have may have already, that cost of may have already been incurred. So this approach provides for more funding for unanticipated special ed, special education costs with a broader use and a timelier manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other commentary? Please, you're welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. My name is Phyllis Jones. I live at 114 Autran Ave, and as full disclosure, my son is a special education student sent out of district.
Welcome.
As Chair of the North Andover Commission on Ability Assistance, by a majority vote of the commission, I've been authorized to state the commission opposes closing the Special Education Stabilization Fund. The commission believes maintaining a stabilization fund requires specific monies to be allocated for special education, protecting our most vulnerable students. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Is there any other commentary?
Joe Hicks, 49 Brad Street Road. I'm a member of the school committee, but speaking on my, as a private citizen. I have a son on an IEP, and although I understand the need to make sure that we are able to support our vulnerable kids, I think the revised financial policies from FinCom and the Select Board do a better job of protecting them, giving us more fluidity, instead of putting restrictions on when and how we can do that, and it allows us better opportunity to make sure all of our kids are successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any final comments? Final two, please, ma'am.
My name is Alexis Lessinger. I live at 59 Phillips Court. I'm just wondering...
You're getting good at this.
Thank you. I'm curious about how, if it's, if this funding for special education is moved into the general funding, yes? Is that true? It's moved into general funding? How is it guaranteed that that $250,000 allocated is not going to be borrowed for something else? Because I do, I did realize we just passed something that said that they could borrow from somewhere. So what is the guarantee with this? And I also have a question. Why was it so difficult to access those funds in the first place?
We'll try to get an answer to that. Thank you very much.
Okay, so I think the borrowing question is referring to the debt that we just did. So that, all that was doing was allowing us to take a loan, kind of like a mortgage, in order to pay for some capital needs. Every year in the budget, we just appropriated it tonight, $1.5 million goes into the Finance Committee Reserve, right? And so what we're saying is that annually, $250,000 of that will be earmarked and be unable to be used for anything else per our policies, okay? The way that a department has to go forward to get to the reserve is that they have to fill out an application, they have to go to a meeting of the Finance Committee, a publicly posted meeting, and they have to get up and explain why they have an issue in their accounts and why they need the money. And then the Finance Committee has to do a public vote in order to make that transfer. It's a better process because we don't have to wait for tonight, right? Because we do have needs that come up during the year, and we cannot, in most of our accounts, deficit spend, and so we have found this to be an ideal way to move forward.
Is it okay if I ask a follow-up question?
Very briefly.
Is, if that process was so long and difficult, is there a reason why it was not amended before?
So this stabilization account was created in 2018. At that time, there was not really other ways to fund special ed overruns. They only recently started allowing special ed reserves, and you start, I've started to see communities go that direction, but it's a very new, recent thing. Five years ago, the town created the Finance Committee Reserve because instead of having our reserves in a kind of transparent manner, or the most transparent manner, we were actually holding them in our benefits line item, and then they were being transferred around at the end of the year to offset deficits. I think this is a lot more transparent because there's a vote, and we're very obvious and honest about the fact that we're having an issue with an account.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. And the final comment or question?
My name is Kathleen Driscoll. I live at 56 Meadow Lane.
Closer to the microphone and start all over again.
My name is Kathleen Driscoll. I live at 56 Meadow Lane, and I have two quick clarifications.
Welcome.
The first is, voting no on this article, voting not to close the fund, would essentially allow the exact same financial procedure as closing it for this year with the additional possibility of altering the plan in the next year after this. Is that correct? Because the fund would have no money in it, and it would not be used, so essentially, it would still, the funding for this program would still be the FinCom Reserve.
Mr. Moderator, if we don't close a stabilization fund, it would just sit at $0.
And the funding for the plan would remain the same, Mr. Moderator?
So technically, we had decided that we were doing that contingent. We've discussed that further. I don't think that would be the case. I don't think that would be the case, and so, yes, the money would stay. The $250,000 would be available annually for special education costs in the North Andover Public Schools, at least $250,000.
And the second clarification is, with the FinCom Reserve, what, where is that guaranteed? The creation of that reserve and the money that would go into it?
So that is in the financial policies that are ratified by both the Select Board and the Finance Committee.
So, Mr. Moderator, that does not need to go through town meeting or any kind of public approval? It's already been approved? Is that correct?
Yeah. So I can just say, so the money goes into the Finance Committee Reserve Fund, which then we can allocate at any meeting where it's brought and put on the agenda, and we vote favorably for. So it adds a lot of fluidity to the process, and it's able to adapt to the needs of the school department and the special education needs of the school district a bit more adeptly, in our opinion. We're, the Finance Committee is in favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would just, I would just add that the money...
You need to get closer to the microphone.
Sorry. I just want to add that...
Stand by yourself.
Regina Keen, I'm a member of the FinCom. The operating budget that we already voted on did allocate funding to the Finance Reserve. So the money is there. There's no other action required to do that.
Except for...
And then the allocation of that money that goes out would be, over the course of the year, allocated by the Finance Committee.
Thank you very much. I think we're ready for the question. Do we understand the arguments? So all those in favor of the article as moved and recommended, please raise your green card with your banded hand. Keep them up, please. Okay, you may put them down. All those opposed to the article? Okay, I declare a majority in favor.
Mr. Moderator, it's a two-thirds.
Yeah. Let's do this again. It requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, raise your green card. Yeah, I'm really sorry to do this. I think we're gonna have to move to our only vote count of the day, perhaps. If our counters can be set. All those in favor, raise your card and keep them up until the section, the counter in your section tells you otherwise. While we're doing this, I'd like to ask that we give our appreciation to several who are not sharing the stage today. Former Town Finance Director Lynn Savage, who retired and whom we generously honored last year, and Planning Board Member, Board Member Gemma Wilkins. Thank you for your participation in town government. Additionally, I'd like us to note that it's come to my attention that this is Rick Gorman's last meeting as a town employee, and he deserves our appreciation. Yes. I also sadly note the passing this past year amidst his term of appointment of Finance Committee Member Ken Gray. Thank you for your service, as we wish the Gray family every comfort and grateful appreciation for their sharing him with us. We welcome, on a more happen basis, new Planning Board Associate Member Kate Kelly and new FinCom Member Jean Irwin. Yes. Also, also our new Finance Director Dennis O'Hain. We thank them for stepping up to service our town and act in its best interests. I wish to note three other things. I thank, vote is still going on, so I wish to note three other things. I thank most particularly my appointees to the Finance Committee, who do a sterling job of advising this meeting, and I thank them from the bottom of my heart for your service, attention, and skill. I note that we felled a lot of trees today in service of this meeting, and ask you to utilize the familiar paper recycling receptacles if you're going to toss our articles and various paper, if you don't choose to hold them at home and keep them in a treasured place. So I thank you for that. I also want to note the passing this past year of a former member of our then School, Board of Selectmen, a longstanding provider of service to our community, Don Stewart. To he, Mary, and family, we wish you the very best, and thank you for your service and attention and pride in North Andover. Are we ready to move to votes, to announce votes? Tellers?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll report the yes votes in Section 1. Come up to the microphones.
Section 1, 46.
46. Section 2.
Section 2, 33.
33. Section 3. Come up, please. Section 3. Come, come up to the microphone, and everybody crowd the microphone, please, move. Section 3.
Section 3 is 31.
31. Thank you. Section 4.
Section 4, 29.
29. Section 5.
Section 5, 45, yea.
45. Section 6.
Section 6, 42.
42. Section 7.
Section 7, 14.
14. Section 8.
Section 8, 20.
20. Section 9.
11.
Section 9, 11. Section 10.
Section 10, 12.
12. Section 13.
Section 11.
Oh, I'm sorry, 11.
17.
17. Section 12.
Section 12, 12.
12, 12. I like that. Section 13.
Section 13, 28.
28. Section 14.
Section 14, 25.
Thank you, 25. Section 15.
Section 15 was 20.
20. Section 16.
Section 16 was 10.
10. Thank you. Section 17.
Section 17 was 12.
12. Section 18.
Section 18, 17.
17. Section 19.
Section 19, 32.
32. Section 20.
Section 20, 24 votes, yea.
24. Thank you. Section 21.
Section 21, 27.
27. Section 22.
Section 22, 26.
26. Section 23.
17.
17. Thank you. Section 24.
Section 24, 13.
13. Section 25?
Mark, are we section 25?
No. Can you call somebody over there? All right, so we can have the stage, please? Stage?
Stage 21.
21. We're still looking for Section 25. While we track that down, I'll keep the reporting of this open, and ask those who choose to vote no on this article, please raise your card with your banded hand.
Where is section 25?
As we are counting votes, I'd like to introduce a special guest today, Dan Santos. Would you please rise? Dan, thank you. Dan is a guest joining us at our meeting today from the University of Massachusetts at Boston, my alma mater, by the way. You may have met Dan Santos when entering the meeting. Dan is a researcher and doctoral candidate who is conducting a research study on open town meetings in Massachusetts. He plans to investigate attendance trends and to hear directly from participants about their thoughts and experiences for this unique form of government, found only in New England and practiced so very well here in North Andover. Dan is here throughout the meeting and will remain afterwards, and if you'd like to chat or sign up to be interviewed, he's available for you. He also has flyers and cards at the lobby table if you'd like to find more about his research or reach out at a later date. I thank him for having an iron butt and joining us today. Much appreciated. And for, on yes votes, Section 25, we have zero. All right, so we now have a total yeses for sex, for all of our sections. Can you scroll down to the total, please? Thank you. Are we ready to present votes? No. We are. Section 1.
We are still counting?
Oh, I'm sorry. Section 1 is still counting?
No.
All right, we'll wait a moment.
All right, they're all down now.
Okay, Section 1. Come up right up to the microphone, everybody.
Section 1, the very cool section, 15.
15.
Section 2, 7.
Section 2 is 7? Excuse me, Hutch. Section 2 is 7?
7.
7. Thank you. Section 3.
Section 3 is 20.
20. Section 4.
Section 4, 22.
22. Section 5.
Section 5, 30.
3, 0. Section 6.
Section 6, 34.
34. Section 7.
Section 7, 8.
8. Section...
Section 8, 12.
12. Section 9.
Section 9, 16.
16.
1/6.
Thank you very much. Section 10?
Section 10, 16.
16. Section 11?
11, 14.
14. Section...
12.
17. 12, sorry.
Section 12, 23.
23. Section 13?
Section 13, 4.
4. Section 14?
Section 14, 5.
5. Section 15?
Section 15 had 30.
Say it again, please.
Had 30.
3, 0. Section 16?
Section 16, 16.
16.
Yes.
Thank you. Section 17?
Section 17, 11.
11. Section 18?
Section 18, 5.
5. Section 19?
Section 19, 8.
8. Section 20?
Section 20, 25.
25. Section 21?
1.
1. Section 22?
Section 22, 12.
12. Section 23?
Section 23, 7.
7. Section 24?
Section 24, 7.
7. Section 25? 0 for Section 25. And Section 27, stage?
Stage 0.
0. So the vote does not pass as the two-thirds vote was required. As you can see, could you bring us down to the percentages again, so everybody can take a gander of it? So we were right to have to do a hand count. Thank you so much for your patience. Article 15 does not pass. Article 17?
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer $250,000 from free cash to the fiscal year 26 general fund budget in order to fund the retroactive payments to the North Andover Fire Department.
The motion is made? And seconded? Do we have any discussion?
Just a brief explanation, Mr. Moderator. These funds are for fiscal year 26, but they would go to pay any retro for fiscal year 25 due to the IAFF Local 2035 Fire Union post ratification of their contract. It's unlikely that we will be settled before June 30th, since we want to make sure that we can pay retro that is due.
Thank you. I see no discussion. I think we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion as written and presented, please raise your card. You may put it down. All those opposed? This is easier to declare as a majority vote. Thank you very, very much. Article 19 has been withdrawn. We now move to Article 22, and I invite the Chair of the Planning Board to join us at the podium. So the Chair of the Planning Board will be leading us through these articles. May I have a motion for Article 22, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Etan Goldberg, 125 Sawmill Road, Chair of the Planning Board. And I would...
I need a motion for Article 22.
Yep, that's gonna be me. I'm just finding it. Just finding the motion, Mr. Moderator. I'd move to adopt Article 22 as printed in the warrant and displayed on the screen.
The motion is made and seconded? Do we have a quick presentation about it?
We do.
Five minutes, sir. It's all yours.
Thank you. Okay. This is a bylaw regarding accessory dwelling units. So see our lovely diagram here. Accessory dwelling units are basically what we know as in-law apartments. Here you see some potential designs of in-law, over the garage, in a basement, an attic, or standalone. These are kind of for display. So an accessory dwelling unit is a small residential living space. Basically, like I said, an in-law apartment can be within your primary residence, like an addition. It can be attached to your primary residence, or it can be completely detached. So we're talking about this because last year, the state legislature passed a law, which was signed by the governor, which requires zoning in every city and town to allow ADUs by right in any district that allows for single-family homes. That law came into effect as of February of this year, so it is now in effect. What we're trying to do is there are certain ways that we are allowed to limit what's in the law, and there are certain ways which we are not. So we're incorporating most of what's in the law and limiting it in the ways that we want. So we're incorporating most of what's in the law and limiting it in the ways that we feel are applicable and allowed. We went to many trainings and got guidance from the state. We had experts before at the Planning Board, and basically, the gist of it was that ADUs need to be allowed, and basically, we need to treat them in the same way that we would treat single-family homes. So if a regulation in our town is not something that is allowed for a single-family home, it wouldn't be allowed for an ADU. That was the basic guideline. So with that kind of in, in mind, we put together this bylaw. So the towns can limit ADUs to one per lot, which we have done in this bylaw. ADUs have to have a separate entrance. They can be no longer, no larger than 900 square feet, or 50% of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling. So if your single-family home is 1,800 square feet or more, the ADU can only be at a maximum of 900 square feet. If your principal dwelling is 1,500 square feet, you could get 750 square feet for an ADU. And there are some restrictions, as I said, that are allowed and some that are not. You are not allowed by state law to restrict it to owner occupancy. Can't be age restrictions. We have very limited things we can do with parking as well, and it has to be either by right or non-discretionary. So we can't make it by a special permit, but what we have put into place is a limited site plan review for certain ADUs. Okay, so ADUs will be under this bylaw permitted by right in any district that allows a single-family home. No more than one ADU per lot. Has to meet all setback requirements, so can't be any closer than what's allowed on your lot to your neighbors as what's currently allowed. If it's within, if it's part of your house, then you just go to the building inspector, show them the plans. Building inspector confirms that it meets the requirements, and you can start building. If it's detached, so not connected to your house, like a detached garage or a cottage, or if it's on a two-family, or if it's on a multifamily lot, then you need to come to the Planning Board for a limited site plan review. Limited site plan review is, is non-discretionary in the sense that the Planning Board can't just say no like a special permit, but it would have to meet certain kind of guidelines and criteria. We did that because we felt that a detached ADU could potentially have more impact on your neighbors if it's separated from your house, with people going in and out separately, than going to your main house that might have some more impacts, might be closer to your neighbors, things like that. We wanted to make sure that the bylaw conforms with the state, with the state law. ADUs have to conform with the building code. It has to conform with Title V, so you know, if you're on septic, as many of us are, you can't add an ADU if that, your septic is no longer capable to hold that. So you'd either have to not be able to do it, or upgrade your septic if that's required. Minimum of one additional off-street parking is going to be required unless you're half a mile from a commuter rail or bus station, which very little of town is, only really just a little bit off of Mass Ave. Short-term rentals, Airbnb, that is prohibited under our bylaw. Is this only for single-family homes? No. Our intention was to make it that way because we thought that that was pretty much the goal of the legislature, but we were told that we couldn't do that. So technically, a two-family or multifamily could put one on, though the setbacks and high requirements and density of most of those would probably make it difficult. It is technically allowed.
Gentlemen, need another minute?
Yes, please. Thank you.
You're my guest.
Okay. If there's other requirements, if you're in a historic district, in a watershed district, you'd still need those special permits to move forward. And so the last thing I'd say is if we don't pass this bylaw, then what happens is the state law takes over. ADUs would be by right without many of the restrictions and limitations that we've put into the bylaw. So that's it as to ADUs. Mr. Moderator, didn't know if you wanted me to speak to the family suite one as well now or after? Which is Article 23.
So we're 20, that article is what number?
23. I'm sorry, 24. So 20, Article 23 and 24 are both related.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to allow conversation about Article 24 as it affects the potential of your vote on this article, but we will not be voting it, so you're welcome to comment.
Okay. Article 24 is about our family suites. So currently, what the town allows is called a family suite. It has to be, this is your really classic in-law in that it has to be someone who's related to you, and it has to be attached, it's supposed to be attached to your dwelling, and it can be up to 1,200 square feet. However, when the use, when it's no longer being used by your in-law, it actually has to be discontinued. We do have some in town, not a lot, but the Planning Board's feeling was that we would no longer need this bylaw. It would create two different sets of rules. It's not really well-regulated, so these, we had concerns that these larger family suites would then become unregulated ADUs. And also, you would only get the benefit of a family suite if your house was of a certain size, so if you, ADU, family suites can only be up to 25% of your house, so you would, to get more than 900 square feet, you'd have to have at least 2,700, up to 3,600 square feet. And so it really would only benefit a small class of houses in town. There's only maybe three or four of those currently that we've permitted, that have been permitted by the ZBA over the last 10 years. So we felt it was appropriate to sunset this, meaning if you really wanted to do it in the next three years, you could, and after that, we would just all live under the same ADU rules and regulations.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion about Article 22? Please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. My name is Marcia Finkelstein. I live at 2104 Harvest Drive.
Welcome.
I am, I am speaking in my own capacity as a citizen of the town. I am a member of the Housing Authority, and I have some personal experience in the community that I lived in before, that passed an ADU before the law, before the law became, you know, in the Commonwealth. So about, about 22, I, I think it's a very appropriate adjustment to taking the law and making it personal to our community. So as I was looking through each of the pieces that you were talking about, I was like, yes, yes, this is something that can benefit our elders that want to, like, retire in their own home and having extra income, and that was the, essentially, the, the reason why the law was passed, was to provide these additional opportunities for homeowners, but also to address the burning question of like, how do we make living affordable? So it's not like a million people in the town are going to rush out and, and create ADUs. If it's 20, if it's 15, if it's 30, that's a good start because everywhere is expensive. So I appreciate that, that the town has put an effort into making it personal, and I think that this could be a really good thing. So I think, I think it should pass. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Bob Curtin, Phillips Common. Question. If somebody built one of these units, what is to prevent them from renting it out every 30 days and having 10 people live in it?
Let's get an answer to that question, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, so it would be in, when you build the ADU, it would, you know, basically, your neighbors would have to complain, or somebody would have to notice that it's being done as an Airbnb, and if it...
Excuse me, sir. I thought the...
Hold on, hold on. So, excuse me, sir.
I will.
Will allow the gentleman to complete his, his answer.
So was it, so it can't, so the bylaw says that you can't, you have to rent it out for more than 31 days? So if you, you could do it, a different person every month, so you, you could do that under the bylaw. So if it was 31 days, or you rented out for two months, you could do that.
Right.
You have, excuse me, sir?
I thought it was...
You have a further question? You ask me.
Yes, sir, I'd like to have another question.
Okay, you're good.
I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you.
I, so the answer is...
Time out, time out, sir. Do you have another question?
Yes.
Ask me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Direct it to me.
My question would be, you can rent it out for every two months, possibly, and have 10 different people living in it every two months?
I'll allow the Chair to speak.
Theoretically, yes. I'm not sure it's a great business model, but yes, you could.
Okay, I mean, so there is no, because normally, there's a bedroom allocation, I guess, or there is no limit to the number of people that can live in one of these units at any given time. That is my question. There is no limit.
That's your final question?
Yes, it is.
And we have a final answer.
There's no limit put on by this bylaw whether or not, I'd have to defer to the building inspector, whether, or the Health Department, whether there's regular, it's just the same as an apartment unit. You can only have as many as are generally allowed. This bylaw doesn't change what's allowed and what's not allowed.
Thank you.
You're very, very welcome. The gentleman has a query or a comment?
Yeah, I, I just have a quick question. My name's Eric, Eric Swerisgalev on Herrick Road. So my question is about the parking requirements. The parking requirements, it said that you were able to waive the parking requirements if it was within a half-mile of the commuter rail, and I was wondering how that value was chosen, and if it could not be raised to, say, one mile?
It was in the state law.
Oh, all right.
Hello, I'm Carson Wong from 60 Ingle Street.
Welcome.
I was wondering what the reason was for limiting ADU size and amount, just like in general?
So again, it's, the state law puts it at 900 square feet and the 50%, so we didn't have a choice on that. I think, but the rationale is that these aren't supposed to be a way, it's supposed to be a way to increase our housing supply and our housing options, but it's not supposed to make two-family homes out of single-family homes. So it's a way to add, as Marcia said, you know, your, your parents maybe stay and age in the same place, or you need some supplemental income so that you can stay and you rent out the smaller part. It's supposed to be a way to help people stay in their single-family homes, allow some smaller amount of people to come into town and to have these smaller units, but not to change the character of neighborhoods with single-family homes. So it's sort of a compromise and a way to build small housing units. It's not going to build a lot of different housing, but it's going to be really important to the small people, amount of people that it does affect and that use it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
You're very welcome. Do we have final commentary? Yes, please come join us.
Yes, Brian Capola, 36 Main Street?
Welcome.
North Andover, Mass.
Welcome.
Okay, the question I have is, what is this? A couple of questions. Actually, one question is, what is, is this going to do anything to help ease the shortage of low-income housing for like elderly and disabled? That's one question.
Continue the rest of your questions.
The next question is, is North Andover then going to work with the MBRTA, otherwise known as MEVA, to do something about getting more, getting more public transportation onboard, like on Sundays and Sundays in the areas? Because you're talking about in-laws and elders, and some of them may not be able to drive cars.
Thank you very much. I'm not certain the Chair can answer all of those questions, but we'll try to elucidate as much as we can.
So I can answer the first one. The second one, I don't think so. So as to the first question, we're not allowed to actually put any affordability restrictions. We asked if we could part, make this inclusionary zoning. We asked if we could make affordable restrictions. The answer we were told is no. So there's nothing required that will, by definition of the bylaw, do it, but the purpose of the bylaw would allow someone maybe who's elderly, who maybe couldn't afford or wants to downsize, to maybe move into the ADU and have someone live in the other portion, or rent the other portion, or vice versa. So it could have some effects to help those people, but nothing about the bylaw itself requires it because we weren't allowed to.
And the gentleman's question about public transportation was a little tangential to what we're talking about. We're going to be courteous and see if we can get a little bit of insight. Manager?
Hi, Mr. Capola. As far as the transportation goes, we actually have our rep from MBRTA here today. So what we will do, he doesn't have to come up, what we'll do at the end of the meeting is we'll, we'll grab you and talk a little bit about your transportation needs.
Do we have a final comment about Article 22? Please.
Thank you. Kelly Salafia, 95, Sandrine. I just have a quick question. Is the town able to put further stipulations on that 30-day requirement? Could we make a decision to make that 30-day longer, or is that determined by the state?
So there is a general definition of what makes a short-term rental, and we chose to use that mostly for consistency. It doesn't have to be 30 days. It could change, but it, we just felt the best is kind of stay within the guidance of the state law and to use something that's kind of a known quantity that we think most other towns are using. I would say we could change it. We could make it 14 days. You could make it seven, but most leases are generally, if you're going to actually lease a place and not have it be a short-term rental, you're at least going month-to-month, which is a standard, like fallback, even if you don't have a lease. So it makes, kind of makes natural sense to do it that, but certainly, I would say, I'd say I'd rather leave it as 30, and if for some reason that wasn't working, amend it in the future, but it, it could be changed if we wanted it to.
So it could be longer as well?
Correct.
Be like 90 days?
Yep.
Okay. If I could just ask one more quick question?
To me.
Oh, sorry. Could I do this in my yard? I don't know if I'm in R1 or R3 and rent to like college students, Meramec, that type of thing?
Yes, you may.
Okay, just wanted to know. Thank you.
As lo, as long as it meets your, all the setback requirements?
Yep.
So there's a preference not to put it in the front yard, but it can be, but it has to, as long as it meets all zoning, if you could put a shed there or anything else, you could, you could do it in your yard. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Do we have any other comments or questions? Go ahead. We have a little bit more clarity?
Sir, so Mr. Moderator, in relation to the question about the max number of people who can live in an apartment or an ADU, there are restrictions, particularly in the sanitary code, that do limit the number of people.
Okay, are we ready? All those in favor of the article, please raise your green card with your banded hand. You may put it down. Those opposed, raise your green card. Okay, a majority vote is required. I declare it a supermajority. Thank you very much. We will move on to Article 23.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 23.
Can I have a motion, please?
I would move to adopt Article 23 as printed in the warrant and displayed on the screen.
Motion is made?
Second.
And seconded. Is there a very brief explanation?
Yes, this just takes the bylaw that we just approved and puts the language into other places in our bylaw, so it just is a housekeeping based on the article we just approved and just lays it out.
Okay, so I, we're going to request the recommendations of the Planning Board. Can you attest to that, please?
We recommend favorable action.
And the recommendation of the Select Board?
Fairwill action.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your card. You may put it down. All those opposed, raise your card. Another supermajority vote. Thank you. Near unanimity. Article 24. We had some brief discussion about this.
I would move to adopt Article 24 as printed in the warrant and displayed on the screen. Second.
Motion is made and seconded?
Just, Mr. Moderator, this sunsets, meaning eliminates the family suite after three years, I believe it's July of 2028, and just on that, anyone who has a family suite that is currently in conformance with our regulations and has been permitted, can do that until its natural expiration. Anyone until July 1st of 2028 who gets a permit through the ZBA can do that and keep it as long as it's in conformance. through the ZBA can do that and keep it as long as it's in conformance. After July 1st of 2028, we just, you can only do an ADU.
Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, recommendations from the Planning Board?
Favorable action.
And from the Select Board?
Favorable action.
All those in favor, please raise your green card. You may put them down. All those opposed, raise your green card. Near unanimity, again, I declare it. More than a two-thirds vote is required. Thank you. Article 24.
Uh...
Article, excuse me.
25.
Article 25.
Um...
My second mistake of the night. I'm sorry.
Mr. Moderator, I would move to adopt Article 25. It's printed in the warrant and displayed on the screen.
The motion is made?
Second.
And seconded. Brief explanation?
This is something... Plane maps change. We're required to change our bylaw to basically mirror FEMA and the maps. That way, everyone can have the appropriate insurance. So, we've done this two or three times in the last five or six years.
Any discussion or queries? Recommendations from the boards, the Planning Board, please?
Favorable action.
The Select Board?
Favorable action.
All those in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your card. I declare a unanimous vote, a two-thirds vote being required. And... Do we have any other zoning?
Article 20?
Yes.
I'd move to adopt, I'm sorry, 26. Article 26 is printed in the warrant and displayed on the screen.
So, the motion is made?
Second, sorry.
Thank you very much.
I bet. Got caught asleep, Mr. Moderator. I apologize.
Right, no worries.
I think he just had 9:45 and is stalling in the pool.
I know you're just trying to extend the meeting because you've made an over or under bet on what the time was.
Come on.
Let's not do that now.
All right. This is a, just a housekeeping, we, this is a bylaw we passed last year, Historic Barn Overlay District. And basically, when we passed it last year, the attorney, we had put in that you need to submit your plans to the planning department first before going to the clerk's office. The Attorney General said, we have to, we can't do that. We have to, you have to submit to the clerk's office either first or at the same time. So, we just changed it to do what the Attorney General told us. It's a good strategy.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? And we'll look for recommendations, Planning Board recommendations?
Favorable action.
And the Select Board's recommendations?
Select Board recommends favorable action.
Thank you. With two-thirds vote being necessary, all those in favor, please raise your card. You may put them down. All those opposed, raise your card. I declare a unanimous vote. Thank you, sir. Much appreciated, Mr. Goldberg. We are at Article 27. I understand the petitioner no longer wishes to propose this article. A motion to take no action is in order. Do I have such a motion? Anybody can make it.
So moved.
Motion is made to take no action.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, raise your card. See unanimous vote. Similarly, Article 28. We heard earlier that there was a request by the petitioner to take their no action. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion is made from the floor to take no action.
Second.
You're a second. All those in favor, please raise your card. You may put it down. All those opposed, please raise your card. I declare it unanimous vote. That, ladies and gentlemen, was our penultimate article. I thank you all for your attention and participation this fine evening. We're not quite done. Not quite done. I wish to give very particular thanks to the town clerk, her extraordinary staff, the volunteer tellers. The town, the town, we're not done, folks. The town IT Director, John Highland, and his staff. North Andover Community Access, Brian Frazier and his staff. Our head teller, Jeff Coco. Lead custodians, you don't know how much work they did in setting this up. John Mullins, Steve Langloys, and there are many colleagues who have worked the last two days in setting up this room. Most particularly for her good advice and, and help, Assistant Town Manager, Laurie Burzleff. Thank you, Laurie. And the many dozens of others who helped run this meeting. I share with you that the very act of conducting this meeting is a fitting way to begin our 379th year as a community and celebrate the momentous spark of a revolution the town meeting represented 250 years ago. Thank you for the respectful debate, civility afforded, and your effort made for each of us to contribute to our town. Be kind to each other. May I hear the final motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that this 2025 annual town meeting be dissolved.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, it is a unanimous vote. Good night, everybody. 9:47, who won the under-over?